Good afternoon. This public hearing conducted by the Committee on General Governmental Operations and Cultural Affairs will now come to order. Notice the public hearing was disseminated in all local media outlets via electronic format on January the 24th, with a second notice on January 29th. Notice of the hearing was also made known on the Guam Legislature's website. There is only one bill on the hearing for today, Bill 268, introduced by Senator Mike Nicholas, an act to approve the Department of Administration's implementation plan of the Government of Guam Comprehensive Competitive Wage Act of 2014 to acquire performance-based standards for directors and deputy directors of line agencies in Imagatlahi and Isagundamagatlahi. We in advance thank everybody for their testimony and for coming down today. Normally at these hearings I allow the sponsor of the main legislation to give an opening statement, but I think a number of people are here today and they're here on their lunch hour, and so what I'd like to do is I'd like to get the employees... I apologize, last week it took so... we went four hours and employees weren't heard. And so I'd like to have the employees come first today to be heard, and hopefully you'll all get back to work after this. But signing up, I have Xavier Etalic, Wes... please come on up. Are you testifying? I don't know. No, I think they may. I have a whole list of names here. If you want to come up and testify, please just join Mr. Etalic at the table. Jessica David, Lovell, onset, Jean de Mical... Conno, Aurora, Taguiden, Francis, Tombook. If you're not testifying, but you're just indicating support, that's fine. But one of you will testify. Tony Lamarena, Ed Artaro, and Nadine Sepeda. Nadine? Just slide your chair up. Mr. Etalic? Just press the button and when it's... yes? You signed up first, so I'm...
Hafadain, good evening, all senators, and all the people have gone behind me. I came here just to... I guess I came here to... Okay, you hear me? I just want to come here and testify with regards to this pay raise issue. I mean, all I know is that this administration has fixed the finances and controlled the spending of this government. So I hear DOA director come up and say it's because the way they managed the money that made the governor believe that the economy is stable enough and the government is stable enough to give $20 million raise. Okay? So far, all I've heard was that the legislature said that there's $7 million for this $20 million additional thing that was supposed to be... is going to be added to our budget every year. So if $7 million is the actual number? I mean, is there more? I mean, all I've heard, I mean, I've seen this on the TV and Facebook. So I just like to know, I mean, because since there's 13 of you guys here right now out of the 15, I think the people deserve an answer and get something positive out of this. Because I sit on an MPC for Timuning, Timun, and Harmon, and that's three villages combined in one. Can you imagine what that mayor goes through? Especially when you've got residents like me that just gripe about anything. But I gripe about the good things. When the tree needs to be trimmed because it's blocking the view of the driver, that's the things I would just mention in our meetings for something to get done. If $7 million is all that the legislature is saying that they can find to cover this $20 million thing, I mean, I don't think it'd be fair for some to get it and for the others not to. I mean, are we one workforce, Gov Guam? Yes, we are. And I always... every election time, I always hear everybody say, "The government workers are the best." Now that the government needs your hand here, what are you guys going to do? The popular thing or the right thing? If $7 million is all that you're saying we can do, then why don't you just take it and say, "Okay, I know we owe you $2 in the hay study plan, but we can only afford to give you a dollar." You know, I don't think nobody in the government anticipated this raise. I'll bet you about two months ago, nobody thought about this thing until the governor mentioned it. So now you guys are in a position whether you're going to do the right thing or the popular thing. And I always say in my heart, "Always do the right thing because it can never be scrutinized." Okay? So with that being said, thank you, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up here and speak my mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Etalic. I'll excuse you, and I know Ben Garita wanted to have a seat. Ben, come on up. Go ahead. Introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee...
Is your mic on? Is the red light on?
Test, test.
Okay.
Test. All right. My name is Wes Tumokone, and I'm here to testify on behalf of the members of the Social Work Student Alliance from the University of Guam. We're here to support... We're here to support Bill 268 and the Responsible Competitive Wage Implementation Act, which applies the hay study pay raises to all classified employees. In the past 30 years, we're proud to say that our social work profession has developed on Guam as we established our Bachelor of Social Work program at the university. And we've also been able to form the Guam Chapter of the National Association of Social Workers. As students, we invest a lot of our education, and we have a common goal of one day offering our professional service to the island of Guam. And the government also has recognized that, and they recognize the need for homegrown professional social workers by funding the national accreditation of the Bachelor of Social Work program at the university and also in supporting us with the enactment of the Guam Social Work Practice Act last year. The implementation of this hay study would mean a 50% increase in entry-level salaries for social workers. And this would bring the salaries for social workers in line with other jurisdictions in the United States where the social work profession is regulated. This would also support our, you know, our long journey in developing our profession and ensuring that there's more qualified and licensed social workers remaining here on our island of Guam. Just to share a little bit about the university, in May 2014, we'll be graduating 14 students at the Bachelor of Social Work program at the university. And of those four are also doing a higher education through a distance learning program with an agreement with the University of Hawaii at Manoa. And this would be our time for each student to kind of contemplate whether we want to take our degrees and our profession and our licenses and move off to the mainland or whether we can, you know, fulfill our goal of staying on island and providing our professional service here on Guam. And the Social Work Student Alliance, we just wanted to ensure that the implementation of the hay study remains focused on the salaries of classified employees, especially for professions and positions in critical fields such as social work. And we do not... we really don't want like history to repeat itself by leaving any critical profession out of any of the implementation. And with that, on behalf of the Social Work Student Alliance, this is our testament of our commitment as students to our profession, but most of all to the island of Guam. And we thank you for the opportunity for letting us come here and voice our opinions as students of the university. So thank you. Beva social work and beva Guam.
Beva, and thank you for starting off this morning with this excellent testimony. And on behalf of the committee, I want to thank all of you for going into what I think is probably one of the most important areas of human services. And so I fully support... I've been trying to get the university to focus on human services, and we're obviously doing an excellent job with the number of you that are coming out this... we're graduating this May, and the four of you that will be continuing on with advanced education. My congratulations to all of you, and thank you very much for your very well-stated and eloquent testimony this afternoon. The committee will for sure take that into account. Thank you very much. Unless anybody has a question of Wes. I don't know if they have classes on Fridays. No, I guess not. Okay, no wonder. Go ahead.
Wes, I join the chairman in congratulating you. I just wanted to know, did you do the research to see if your position title as described or as you described your testimony in favor of this bill is also equivalent in the hay plan proposed? Are they the same or is there an additional, you know, requirement stated explicitly in 268?
So in the bill, we actually did our research as the students over there with the social work program, and we do understand that we will be part of it, but we want to voice our, you know, our opinion to ensure that the social work profession is included. And in the past before history, something so drastic like this, we've noticed that, you know, in history, like there was a profession that was left out, which created more problems for the legislature further down the line. So we wanted to ensure that our profession, we value, and we want to make sure that we are indeed included in this plan.
Okay. So if the original hay plan submitted outside of the proposal of 268 included you, either one would work for you. You're here to advocate for your profession.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and I want to just make sure that was on the record. And thank you to all the students who have appeared to do that as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I just would like to also thank you for representing the student body and for pursuing a field of interest which the community needs. There's one... the reason why I asked to provide some comments is a phrase that you said that after or during the course of your education and your training, you're going to come to a point where you all have to make a decision as to whether you want to move to the mainland. And over the course of the last, I can honestly say, 17 years, there have been adjustments that have been made by this legislature with that intent in mind, is to be able to retain our personnel, our people, after they acquire the necessary education. When you talk about teachers, when you talk about nurses, there have been appropriate pay plans that have been adjusted. And this is one of the reasons why we're here today, because we recognize that we, as an island community, need to be pegged to a particular standard. And one of that standards is the national standard. Bring most of our professional positions, as well as our other administrative positions within the government of Guam closer to the national level, but most importantly, or just as importantly, critical positions such as yours. So I do know that the hay plan to a great extent would address your concern, and that's one of the reasons why we as a body, in conjunction with the executive branch, are leaning forward to try to see what we can do to implement this proposal and ultimately ensure that all of you who are being educated at a wonderful institution, whether it be University of Guam or Guam Community College, can continue to remain here. Because as a father who just had a son graduate and anticipates three others to be graduating with a degree, I certainly would like to continue to encourage them to stay here. And we have to make sure that the compensation is appropriate so that they no longer look at the mainland other than for vacation purposes, but would continue to look at Guam as their permanent home. So thank you very much for your testimony. I certainly appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. The next in line is Senator Tony Lamarena.
Buenas, Vice Speaker and Senators of the 32nd Guam Legislature. My name is Tony Lamarena. I'm the Executive Director of Civil Service Commission. I'm appearing before you today on behalf of the seven commissioners of the commission. We want to thank you for the opportunity to offer comment on Bill 268-32, an act to approve the Department of Administration's implementation plan of the Government of Guam's Competitive Wage Act of 2014 to require a performance-based standard for directors, deputy directors of line agencies, Imagalain, Isagundamagalain. The commission supports the portions of Bill 268, which seeks to approve the general pay plan for classified executive branch employees. However, the commission is concerned with the language contained within Bill 268, which places authority over granting of raises to certain cabinet level and elected officials with the commission. Under current law, the commission's jurisdiction extends only to employees in the classified service. Additionally, the commission's current jurisdiction is largely limited to adjudatory functions with some duties for review of personnel actions across the executive branch. Bill 268 would place responsibility with the commission over a group of employees who are unclassified. And it would give the commission authority over compensation for this unclassified group of employees. That responsibility should be placed within the entity that handles compensation matters on a regular basis, and that is the Department of Administration. Those must...
Thank you very much. Mr. Artaro.
Good afternoon, Senator Cruz, fellow honorable senators. My name is Edward Artaro, Lieutenant with the Guam Fire Department, currently assigned as the chief's aide. Unfortunately, Chief Joyce Nicholas has left island yesterday for a short family vacation. He has asked that I attend to read his testimony. Although I am here to read his testimony, I am unable to provide any further elaboration or comments as these are his words, and it would only be best that he be the one to provide further elaboration on this. So let me begin. Buenas, San Hafadain. Thank you for allowing my testimony to be heard. Although I am on leave after a year serving our country, I could not help but get involved with this particular issue as it directly affects the quality of life that I have worked hard for over many years to build for my family and I. This testimony is to state that I fully support the full implementation of the 2014 hay plan and request this body approve it in its current form and intent. This testimony is also to state that I do not support Bill 268. We all know that there has not been an across-the-board update on compensation for Government of Guam classified and unclassified employees since 1991. This is a direct violation of 4 GCA, Chapter 6, Subsection 6301, in which employee compensation shall be based on internal equity and external competitiveness, and that compensation will be targeted at the U.S. national average. Furthermore, the internal equity evaluation should happen annually with the external competitiveness evaluation conducted every three years. I believe that this is the base of the issue of such a drastic increase in salary ranges. It is not that the employees do not deserve it. It is that the change has been long overdue for over 23 years. If the government followed the law, salaries would have been adjusted incrementally and thus more palatable. And that is a failure of both sides of the aisle over several administrations and legislative bodies. Today, you have the opportunity to correct an injustice that Government of Guam employees as a whole has endured. This includes our elected leaders and executive managers. The 2010 hay plan is a product created by a reputable organization and further refined by the professionals of the Department of Administration to what is now the 2014 hay plan. I do agree that it is not a perfect plan, but is a great starting point with what I expect to be an above 90% solution that can be amended specifically on a case-by-case basis. As stated on many occasions, there is an appeal process internally with the DOA, and there is always the legislative process that can create law to solve concerns. Bill 268 seeks to remove elected leaders and cabinet members, executive managers, directors, and chiefs from the 2014 hay study and placing their intended pay increase into an account to be based on performance values pegged to quality of life. First, it is absolutely impossible to quantify a subjective term as in quality of life. How do you connect SAT scores to the Department of Administration or public safety? Or the crime rate to the fire department? Or the unemployment rate to Guam Customs and Quarantine? Or the cost of medical care to the Department of Tomorrow Affairs? What would I get if I can prove that we saved one life in the Guam Fire Department? Since that one life is priceless, what should I be paid? A concern was mentioned as to the quality of managers that a governor appoints. While these appointments are confirmed by this legislature, so if there are failures, this legislature should take responsibility. If there is a failure by the cabinet members, the legislature has oversight powers to bring the light to failure. The Government of Guam is a performance-based organization. Our governor sets his direction, and we are held to task to meet it. If we fail, we are subject to dismissal. None of us come to work and say, "What can I do to lower the quality of life on Guam?" We in fact do the opposite. But to get the best results, you have to invest upfront, and if you don't get the return on investment you desire, then you can change what you are investing in. You get what you pay for, and higher pay attracts quality managers. No organization says, "Come work for me, below your worth, and if you do your job right, we will pay you in 12 months." That is what Bill 268 is doing. While mayors are without a doubt worth their weight in salt, I as the fire chief, along with the police chief and my fellow cabinet members, serve the entire 170,000-plus population of Guam within our 19 villages. We also deal with the 50,000-plus military population in and outside of the military gates. Let's not forget the over 1 million visitors annually. My area of operation is all 212 square miles of Guam and the surrounding ocean waters. We directly execute the laws created in these halls. We do these 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, every day, every day and night. Private sector chief executive officers affect a lot less and get paid a whole lot more. But as leaders, we are not supposed to talk about our work. It is a conversation that happens behind closed doors between the hiring authority and the employee. It is always a tough situation when you hold a leadership position because you're expected to hold your employees in front of yourself. Let your subordinates get the new equipment while you take the old. Give them the best systems to do their jobs more effectively. But a mentor of mine once told me that a leader must not forget to take care of himself so that they can maintain the motivation, the energy, and drive to be that inspirational leader. I say that we have taken care of our employees with the 40% for public safety and now this 2014 hay plan, so why not include the leadership if it is feasible? This administration has proven that they back their commitments. They promised tax refunds, we got it. They promised more ambulances, we got it. They promised more police cars, we got it, and more to come. They promised to make whole the 40% public safety pay, and we got it. Before I left on my deployment, the governor promised they better Guam, and in my eyes, Guam is better. How can we not trust that they will keep the commitment to support the hay plan into the future, inclusive of the cabinet members and elected leaders? It is historically evident that the governor will ensure the longevity and affordability of the 2014 hay plan implementation. I took a large pay cut to step up as the fire chief. Now with the full and well-deserved implementation of the 40% public safety pay, I continue to take an even larger cut. The fire chief makes less than 80% of its firefighters. The battalion chiefs or operations managers make over 30,000 to 50,000 more when all salary and benefits are calculated, while there are firefighter ones and twos who make anywhere from 3,000 to 8,000 more. Externally, the fire chief of Anderson Fire and Rescue and the federal fire chief for the federal fire department here in Guam both get paid over 50,000 more than I do. I challenge you to find any chief executives that makes less than their subordinates. I'd like to know how many of you have employees who make more than you do. And so I close by saying, allow the 2014 hay plan to take effect in its full entirety. Take Bill 268 off the table and put more time into your performance-based plans and details. Assign it to bonuses or merit increases. I welcome any sensible performance-based plan as long as it is a plan-specific, reasonable, and feasible to what is in my lane, not general to quality of life. Thank you. Signed, Joey Cesar Nicholas, Fire Chief, Guam Fire Department.
Ms. Sepeda?
Hi. Good afternoon, Vice Speaker and all you senators. My name is Nadine Sepeda. I'm a psychiatric social worker supervisor with Guam Behavior Health and Wellness Center. I'm here today because I'm in support of any pay raise. It's been long overdue. I'm actually concerned, as I came here last week, that I know for my position, serious psychiatric social worker was not reviewed by the hay consultants. So we're left behind with status quo. As we go and proceed and we move forward to this, we are demanding more people to say, "Get your masters, stay here, help people in the mental health, help people in other areas. However, you're not being compensated." There's a big disparity, and that's why I'm coming here today, because I'm concerned. I currently have six staff, that's currently four that are... or three that are licensed, and three that are working under my licensure in hopes to get licensed. I'm doing a lot of work currently to currently work with my HR to also change the position because of new social work laws, currently the MFT, and I was in support of that. And because we need to have that standard of care for the people that we provide care, it may look like they're really small numbers, but truly, to save one life makes a big difference. And we do that day in and day out. And so I'm here because I'm in support of any raise, but to be left out, and I'm glad there is an appeal process, I've been trying to work on, really with my HR, to see how can we move forward to see, to get our series and position description reviewed and get impacted based on the salary, because I've done my research to actually see what's the national pay at other areas and not looking at big cities. I used to work in LA to know that with someone with a masters and license, start off at 60, 65. But I'm not going to go there because LA is a huge city compared to Guam. I'm looking at something like Boise, Idaho, starting pays 55. And at that, a PSW comes in at $28,000. So I come here today that I ask, and I'm glad you guys have a tough choice. You really have to make a very difficult decision. I'm more in support for the pay raise, but I'm really hoping that this process in regards to appeal is in place with timeframes that we know something will move forward as where our issues and our concerns are being addressed. So I want to thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sepeda. How long have you worked for government?
12 years.
Your position was not evaluated by hay before the 2010...
Unfortunately, as I looked, I held this position for five years. Our department actually failed to submit any position description, so yes. Large... basically, our department failed and didn't submit that at the time. And so when I came in and discussion of hay, of course, I've been calling DOA, talking with HR to find out nothing was submitted. So I was saying, "From this point," because that's not my line of expertise, HR, "help me and assist me and guide me in how we can actually get this, our position description to be reviewed and to see a true reflection of the type of work we do to get the pay that we need and deserve."
And between 2011 and last month, how often have you had contact with DOA in an attempt to try to address?
I have actually talked several times, and they've given me direction as well as our HR from our department or our center. And we were actually working on the letter, redefining some of the position description and getting the percentages down, doing some research and comparing it from different sites or other places that are rural area as well. So again, I just got clarity from last Friday that there should be an appeals process, and I have all that in place. So that's where I'm at at this point.
When was the first time you started to talk to DOA about the fact that you guys were excluded or not included?
About two years ago.
Two years ago, and in the two years, did they include you in this plan that was submitted to us last... a month ago?
I'm not quite sure. Vice Speaker, I'm not sure. I've been working with my HR from our department as well, so...
You don't know if you're in this...
I...
If you guys were included, you and your employees?
I'm not sure, yeah. I'm not sure. I'm talking about from the previous, and my understanding is that it was status quo, nothing was submitted, and that they weren't reviewed by the hay consultants.
Have they given you anything to you in writing that you were or you were not included?
No, nothing in writing. Everything has been verbal via telephone.
And what have they told you you need to do to be able to get included if you aren't included?
At the time, because they didn't have an appeal process, they said if you were to write a letter, get the... get the support from your director," um, and saying that you weren't, uh, position descriptions were not reviewed by hay consultants, then it'll be sent to DOA, um, from the director writing a letter, then DOA would basically review that, and then at that time, they didn't have an appeal process, is what I was told and informed.
And when was that?
That was about six months ago.
And what have you heard since?
Um...
What have you been told since six months ago that there was no heat appeals process?
That, uh, basically, that, and I've been patient, so pretty much same thing, just do what you can, and that something, they're working towards something in the appeals process, is what I was told by our HR, so...
Any others have any questions? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gredo?
Gawa siya, bisantega, Rino. Retiree, Guam retiree. I guess I'm the only retiree here that gonna testify. I'm a former, uh, Guam employee with the Guam Police. I retired about, almost twenty-seven years ago. I'm here to support pay increases, pay weight. But the senators, however, will decide what is, whatever is right and justified for a employee. But in reality, the reason I come here to testify, because when the retiree came here to testify on their collar, almost if not all, majority of our leaders almost got struck. Kalaman heart attack, Anzo? And then my gogogo retiree, eighteen hundred dollars. It's like the retirees committed a big sin. Eighteen hundred dollars from the eleven, uh, eleven hundred that they're receiving, and they're asking back what they took away from them. We then come at that time for pay increases. Many of us retiree are earning on a poverty level, Gatsun. I'm not receiving forty thousand dollars or fifty thousand, or maybe thirty thousand or whatever. But when the retiree asked to increase for their collar from eleven hundred to eighteen hundred, some of you already, the first thing you do is, Diablo, why? Why do we have to give the retiree their collar? Why? Man ma matay retiree? Pan ma ase ni retiree? Respetan di retiree ni man onko? Estan oo onko? Usuputi pay increases, ito dwe Guam? They deserve it. But senators decide what is right and justified for each employee. So the same thing from us, now when we come here and ask, think about us too. And don't downgrade it us. The retirees were attacked left to right. People write on letters to the editors. Downgraded us that were beggars. And you should go to work. I know several individuals who write to letter to the editors. Even Pacific Daily News attack us because of our collar. This is a crying shame, Gatsun. I'm buzzing on this. All the mere eighteen hundred dollars that we're asking, we don't receive eighteen hundred every month. This is only once a year. And this administration almost struck. No, it's too much, too much. Fifteen hundred dollars is almost too much too. And I thank you all for supporting the eighteen hundred that we receive. And I hope that later on this year, don't give us a hard time for whatever we're gonna ask. Samu na na yon be, estis ya na pinadisi? We're not asking for pay increases. I understand that even our supplement, it used to be three, seven hundred. They took away around four hundred dollars. And we're still receiving three hundred. That's not even much for a retiree receiving, Gatsun. Twenty, twenty-six, thirty thousand? No, if I look at the pay increases now, lana? This must be the glorious pay increases I ever see. Ten thousand, thousand of dollars. Twenty thousand. Even the governor, forty thousand. But eighteen hundred dollars is too much. This is a crying shame, Diablo. I'm sorry that I feel like this. But I'm speaking up here on my behalf only, I'm not representing the retiree. The majority of them now is sick, I am not feeling good anymore. Lana palina nai ri ti rau? Sama gogone shudun yani ma omu tatu? They took away, they used to be more than eighteen hundred dollars, they took away that many, many, hundreds of dollars, and they give us eleven hundred. Pa wu new atan si retiree? Even our leaders now? Some of our directors are here, pass it so we can implement it. Shit, but when it comes to retiree? Taza salapi? But when it comes to retiree? No, it's too much, there's nothing, nothing in the plan, there's nothing. Taza? Respetan man onko? PDN consecutively, Gatsun? Making headlines on the news, writing letter to the editor? Don't give the retiree their collar. Don't give the retiree their collar. Yeah, they see. I worked in Guam Police for twenty-five years. I used to be a patrolman and associate juvenile detective in Guam Police for thirteen years. And I know how it used to be in public safety. But our income at that time is not the same as what it is now. Map tu chi ne, Gatsun? Wanda stan apiniti si pa ta taiguini estis ya na? Usuputi to dosh eshi? Pa ma gogone ni to do? I supported all them, give them what they deserve. But don't kill us, retiree. Don't let us down. We work too. And many of the kids here too, their parents are retiree in Guam. Estan wanna bana tu tumwa pa besangan gi ni na? Na apiniti si na bana to dosh eshi? Bi zangan ba kentush taiguini na? I don't really like to talk like this now, you know? But what does get me, nobody even write letter to the editor yet about you guys. Nobody wrote, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't see any, I was reading the news, nobody write letter to the editor about? Wow, the pay increases. Taza? PDN, only a, a small comment? They're, they're so careful in writing their letter editorial, to make sure that it doesn't look like, uh, you know, the, it's damaging to the administration, or, or whatever it is. Taza estis ya na? Na apiniti? To dosh eshi na ba barias man mustes de gi ni? Respetan lu ki? Da yan, ta manen respetan zu? Pu pa bozang gi man matan ni retiree na? Respetan lu ki? Da yan, ta manen respetan zu? So I, I've been there with these guys here. And even before I worked for the Guam, you know, where I used to work? I worked outside in the road, I cleaned Pigo Cemetery cut grass, I worked as a painter laborer up at Anderson Air Force Base, I used to work commercial board at Stibodon. I used to do those things. If I combine all my, my employment and everything, you know, with military eight years, I thought it maybe over forty-five years I've been working. Forty-five years. Taza mas besangan? Now suputi Senator, Senator Mike Cruz, I son Nicolas. But whatever it is, see it that it's done right and justified. Mu ngadi, papak la masa siya na kasi pay increases? Papak la masa dan to doshi? Kun to du lu ki policeman? Ki maya usuputi? Dan to doshi? Dokun to du policeman man, 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 man rekoku matay gaga? Even police, when I used to be a policeman, I put date animal on the road. Away from the road and all that thing. I do a lot of dirty things even when I'm a policeman. It's a dirty work, a dangerous work. Same thing with the fire people. That's all I have to say. I didn't come here really to attack or things like that, okay? I'm just expressing my feeling, that when we were the one that came here to ask for the collar? Lana? It, we feel like being attacked left to right, we're stepped down, we're kicked, and all that thing. Thank God. That they approved eighteen hundred dollars? I don't know what's gonna happen by the end of this year again, whether we're gonna crawl in here, crawl in this building to ask again for our collar. I don't know. I'm not, I look, you might think I'm look okay. But I am not the same anymore. I thank you all, thank you very much, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gredo. And, uh, the entire committee has heard your, your testimony, and we'll take that into account later on this year. Thank you very much. We'll thank, do you have, anybody have any questions, Ben? Uh, Mr.?
Senator Lamarena, um, can you give us some, some, uh, summary maybe of some of the issues that arose that were addressed by the commission with the implementation of the two thousand and ten plan? And, um, in your discussion with your staff, I know you, I don't think you were there. And then what has changed in the plan that's been submitted by the governor that may have resolved some of those issues that were presented to the commission, and have they been resolved?
Okay, Senator, I, I really can't, we really can't compare this plan and what was passed back then, because we don't have, we don't have access to the evaluations. So, um, you know, unless we're provided the...
But the issues that were raised by the employees to the commission?
Right, I, I think, you know, a lot of the issues that were raised back then was the, the, um, accessibility as far as an appeal process.
Okay, so do you have, did they then, did the commission then implement an appeals process?
Okay, what we did on, on this plan, I, I have not seen the plan submitted by DOA, but, uh, we, we did meet with them, and we, uh, we requested to be incorporated in the appeal process. Um, and so we, we were under the understanding that what we discussed was to be included in the plan. So it did include, in this plan now, if it was, uh, presented as we worked on it, uh, does now include CSC in the final appeal process.
Is that written anywhere?
You know, let me talk to DOA when I leave here and ask him if, if that, but, uh, my understanding was when we were in discussion with him, that was the, gonna be a part of the plan that was gonna be submitted to you folks for approval.
Okay, did you have a written, uh, process, procedure that you submitted to DOA so based upon those discussions?
Yeah, what we did was we worked on a procedure, on, on the steps, on, first of all, the employee would go to DOA, make their appeal, and then if, if the employee's not satisfied with that, then the final alternative would, to come to CSC.
Can you share that with us?
Insofar as the process?
Yes.
We, what we would do is, we would follow more or less the grievance process that is presently in existence. So when they finally come to us, they would file with us an appeal, but the process that we would follow is, is similar to that of the, the grievance process.
Can you share that with us?
Okay, so...
I mean, can you write it down and send it in?
And send it to you?
Yes, to the committee.
Sure.
Based upon the discussions you had.
Yeah, we, we can, we can send you the grievance procedures on how, how...
That would be applicable to this. Yes, that would be very helpful.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
Any other senator? If not, I'll thank this panel and we'll call the next panel. Ms. Janet Ogun? Ms. Gena Dimnall? Daniel Perez? Michael Duñez? I see a number, a lot of employees out there. Any of you that wish to testify, please sign up. Um, I see the Director of, um, Department of Administration. Madam Director, I'm, purpose, last week, we spent a lot of time together. So this week, I, I thought maybe if you heard some of the concerns of the employees, we can discuss them. But I think, let's hear what the employees have to say and, and, um, see how you can or will be addressing them. So, uh, any other employee or public, uh, citizen who wishes to testify, mayors, whoever, please, please sign up and we'll all listen to all the testimony, and then we will have, uh, we'll listen to the Director of Administration. Mayor Ben, did you wish to testify? Please. All right, uh, Ms. Ogun?
Manana sidu, Mr. Vice Speaker, zantodram zuni ar na blinashia nasenidot. Gahu si Janet Ogun? Matatna masakada inonug i, zanotomoro? Zany activist. I, I'm here against the pay increase for all elected officials and political appointees. Now, if, if the staffers for the, uh, mayors are unclassified, I think they should be classified and be given the same pay raise or pay, uh, as all the other clerks and, and whatever the mayors have in their staffing pattern. I think it should be comparable with all the other people. Now, I oppose any pay increase for all elected officials, primarily because the Department of Education is screaming and hollering they're not gonna make payroll. We have the hospital that has a never-ending bill. We have vendors that have never been paid up to, to the current date. We have potholes all over this place, you don't even know if you're gonna watch the road or watch the oncoming car, because the potholes are so bad throughout this island. A lockdown in Inarahan, a lot of pendedito? It's just unconscionable that you people, or shall I say, pay increases for elected officials? At that rate, I think not. I really think not. I don't find senators deserving of pay increases when they don't return phone calls to their constituents, when they think that you're a great friend and a great leader, and does not acknowledge anybody, cries like a baby because it's not his idea, when a senator stands on the legislative floor saying, "I rather owe the people than the bank." Something's wrong with that picture. And when you senators go out to public meetings and think that you have to take, uh, precedence over your constituents, that's a big mistake. Don't forget, the electorate are your bosses. You are not our bosses. And again, I shall emphasize, no pay increases for elected officials or political appointees. It should be put out to the, to the people as a referendum. The pay increase that the senators gave themselves in two thousand and ten should be repealed. Thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ogun. Mr. Perez? All right, Mayor?
Steve Perez, everybody deserve Perez. Why? Inflation have robbed us. So we go according to the inflation. That's it. My la la publica, kaderia. Kaderia ma arsi presiu. My la la, my la la, papa i, i, keblini ponapasi avapunfa. Sa fa, sa konori presiu, ta gi gi, se domo. Pus misita ne, zanyangwa kobi, na i, otu, afamla gohoni amzo. Van danan, zanyagobenou, den spia, afempeño, peñax, kavuli, isetdu. Sa, my la gozo, noli amzo, man kompa shne, toga, lo si geta, man mo mo kaderia. Tisinet, man na kompe de, ni na yan. Lo fa na kweza, den spia, itarto ni, pensetbi, i publico pensetbi. Sa, ni gera ma me li, tolos, i pa ta, setbi, i, komi da, oni tarto siya. Pus fa na kweza, mizan, spia, peñu ni, afesiano, angwa kobi, na i. Na i, apasi tato, antu na apasi, una na na la, familia. Ni gema stonkulu, pus fa, fa na, kompe fa re, basta ti partida, ko Republican, Democrat, Independent. Pro fa na na, spia, peñu, zan fa na kweza, den spia, epena, la la tato, mi na oli, ma oli na ten la la. Sa pa, man mo put tolos tato, pu la ma, ma shashketin guan, sa fa, bu la sakki, sa ti ma, ma tsotsu, ta ti na, kebliniya. Bu la nenokse, veni giswa. And we don't have to experience that. And la 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 zo, ki, ben ti shetin, shakana, ma fa na go. Komu la zo, la la zo, ta den, oli es ti she, na klasen, baber yes. Bu la sakki, sa fa, sa bu la ti, ponia, pa ma manoki, ti ma, ma tsotsu, sa i, pus ta, ma fa, ba ba ber. To do nenokse, i, welfare, i federal government did not help us at all, afan na na, wi, mangago. Lo hita, ta fa na kweza, na ten, ya, ta spia, peñu, ta fa maoli, es ti, i Perez. Ngama, diro ga fa na, tuwa, angwa kobi, pasimi tato. Ben ta smas, una pasi tato, mas ma la go, ma tsotsu maoli. Antu na pa pasi maoli, forget it, ti fu tsotsu maoli. I have that experience. And ni gaiu mi ta, bu la nu, tato, ma ma tsotsu, dospe peñu, ponapunfa. Arse se, zan ya nu, rodo, pu pa fa ma pasi maoli. Sa fa, sa ma arsi, uni zo, lo kada to. Sa fa, na ti, ma me gao, kito, drukuzo, guzo re. Nsi ta fa, ta fa na kweza, fa re. Believe me, zanyangwa kweza, ma, ma, pus sumpe, fae ma la go mi. Ma ben, sa sa, zan ma na kunsa, tuwa di, pa ma re di si, i publico pa ma re di si. Sa ti ma na fa, maoli, ma na na ta. Pus fa na, es pitase, fa na kweza, zan, chegi, maoli, maoli, ma na pre, to ri tato. Kuka, 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 shu ma si.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mr. Duñez.
Good afternoon, Mr. Vice Speaker and members of the legislature. Uh, this compensation package is a very complex, uh, issue and I'm gonna, um, focus my comments just on the, um, compensation for the executive, the directors in the executive branch. Um, I, I encourage the legislature to, uh, follow through on the proposed pay scale for the executive directors for several reasons. One is, is that there is a, a large disparity between, uh, what directors are getting paid and what their subordinates are in, in, um, organizations like the, uh, Fire Department, the Police Department, uh, Public Health, and I believe also, uh, um, the Hospital, Mental Health. The, the other reason, uh, that I think we need to focus on adjusting the, the pay scales for the executive branch is, is a very simple reason. We need to attract qualified people to run these departments and agencies. I think if, if we continue to allow the disparities to continue, we're going back to the days when a director, when he's asked a question, what are your qualifications? Can just get one very simple answer. I am a friend of the governor. We survived those days and I think we can't go back to those days anymore. The issues are too complicated, um, and it's so easy for, for things to go wrong if we don't have qualified people, you know, in charge of these departments. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Mr. Perez?
Thank you. Good morning, honorable senators. My name is Daniel Perez. I'm a retired airline personnel of San Francisco, California for the last over twenty years. Uh, you have to excuse my voice because, uh, there's a health issue and, uh, Father Time is catching up on me. But I'll try to make my oral, uh, testimony as short as possible. And to the benefit of all the young generations of the workers of the people of Guam at this point in time. We're talking about salary, which I was looking at two sixty eight, that's thirty two, which is very well put together by Senator Michael Saint Nicholas. I'm sure it takes a lot of time to put this package together. When it comes to wages and salary, it is so gratifying to have a pay increase. The salary range that we show listed in this, uh, bill is not a very high salary in comparison to the very high cost of living here on Guam. Just to let you know that this morning I had a cup of coffee with friends of mine over at, it's pretty close from here, Java, Java. Five dollars for a cup of coffee. I am sure you agree with me that that's pretty expensive. A dollar these days cannot buy you a cup of coffee. For all the government employees, when it comes to pay raise, they're extremely happy because it increases their financial dependability. But on the other hand, will, do you think, the question is, do you think that these employees have really sat down in their computer and read and familiarized themselves with the Hay Group Plan of what it really consists of? That we are trying to match that plan based on the cost of living on Guam? If you were to take a survey right now, I don't think a lot of them would have read the Health Group Plan. If you look at what has happened recently with adding two vice mayors on the island of Guam, it puts a burden on the revenue of the government of Guam by putting two more very high paid officials with the revenue that government of Guam is receiving on an annual basis. You will agree with me that the government is not living within its means. Where are we gonna justify the revenue for all of these pay increases? The executive brands have listed that if we raise the mayor's salary up to eighty five thousand, it's all fine and good, that's fine. But what if we reduce the mayors of Guam to three instead of nineteen? That would be a termination of your political career, your senators, if you introduce the bill like that. Because it affects a lot of families on a small island of Guam. The population of Los Angeles is over ten million, one mayor. The population of San Francisco is over a million, one mayor. Why can't we have at least just three mayors? Commissioners, when it was started in Guam, is the name of the mayors before it was changed to mayor. But since the population here is only a hundred and sixty thousand people and the square miles of Guam is not that big, why nineteen? And why seven vice mayors? And where are the revenues gonna come from to compensate for these people? If you ask the mayors, have you looked into the job description of the mayors, the duties and responsibilities? I'm sure that you would realize and you would agree with me that you have failed to work with the ordinances and enforce the ordinances in the village that we live, that we live, to improve the quality of our lives. I am speaking as one of the seniors now on Guam. But my experiences within my senior years, I have lived in so many different parts of the world. I have seen people that struggle for a living. I have seen the poor, the extremely poor and the very poor. I have seen the rich. I have dined with billionaires. I have lived in the most expensive hotels in the world. I achieved that because I have an option. Everyone here, the working force of the government of Guam employees have an option. You have the capabilities. If you're not satisfied with your job and your salary and your wages, and you're doing a fantastic job, an outstanding job, your discipline, you're very productive, but your pay has not increased. Then it's, I think it's time for you to look for a new job or a higher paying job, provided that you are qualified. Ladies and gentlemen, it is very serious that the employees of the government of Guam do have a pay raise. Our cost of living is extremely high. The reason why it's high has been controlled by the local government and the federal government. The fees at the port is extremely high. The shipping is extremely high. A container that is shipped to Japan with equal distance from the United States and a freight container is that is shipped from the west coast to Guam is twice the price of what it is. Going to a foreign country and coming to Guam. Why? Is because the Jones, the Jones Act, and not only that, is because we allow the increases to happen. If you live in Florida, a case of water is only ninety nine cents. You live on Guam, you can hardly buy a bottle of water for ninety nine cents. I am just saying that the cost of living on Guam is astronomical. The wages of the people of Guam are extremely low. If you're looking for financial security, it is you to blame that you did not have probably the, the ability and the initiative to learn and to, to achieve financial security because you have the capabilities. But not to deviate from wages and salaries, I am in favor of Bill two sixty eight. I don't think I'm in favor with the executive brands raising it, raising the salaries astronomically. Because there is no justified revenue to provide for those pay increases. If we have the revenue, fine. But if we don't, who do we burden? The people of Guam. It is very sad to know that we are borrowing money from the bond market to give the people back their money, that they have paid too much tax. We call it tax refund. It is a really a shame. That money should have been always set aside. That when it comes time for the people that file their taxes and they pay too much, it shouldn't be three years later that they're paid back their money. That's not, that's not the way to manage our government funds. But who's to blame? The people of Guam is to blame. I thank you very much for allowing me to speak with you. I wish that I was a lot healthier to discuss a lot of other very important issues. But even when what the mayors are saying that when disaster comes to Guam and we let our employees work past the eight hour and we don't pay them or compensate them. Well, in the first place, don't let them work if we don't have the money to pay them. Why should an employee be burdened to work twelve hours on a typhoon recovery and not get paid? That's not justified. It's the same token of what's going on with the teachers in the Ganya Heights. They work for two weeks and not getting paid. Where's the money? And how we manage the money may be a problem. The revenue that we receive to operate government of Guam may not be enough. So what is the solution? Raise the taxes? I guess that's the only solution. Fees with the government and taxes should cover all the means of what the government needs. Thank you very much. Adios.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Perez. Yes, Ms. Ogun?
I have a testimony against the portion where Senator Saint Nicholas wants the mayors to have a pay increase. I oppose that. Especially for the mayor of, mayor and vice mayor of Dedidu. Sorry, uh, it's not against you. I'm only speaking on, on, on my village, okay?
Please, just go ahead. Continue.
The mayor of Dedidu is not worthy, or the vice mayor for that matter, of a pay increase. Primarily because they selectively decide who they will or will not help. And when a mayor sells their soul to the devil for a job and, and speaks of people's personal business in the village, that is not acceptable. That is truly not acceptable. So pay increases for the mayor and vice mayor of Dedidu, not just no, but hell no. Thank you.
Any questions with the rest of these, this panel? If not, thank you very much, Mayor. Gordon. Ms. Perez. June. John Deny. And, uh, Mr. Adam. Again, if there are any employees that wish to testify, please just sign up so that, uh, we can hear from you. Thank you very much.
Vice Speaker Cruz.
Please introduce us up to, all right.
Senators, my name is Gordon Mizusawa. I'm the associate. I'm the Associate Administrator of Operations at Guam Memorial Hospital. I represent, uh, the employees of G M H. The G M H employees fully endorse the Governor of Guam Competitive Wage Act of two thousand and fourteen. If this exec, executive order is approved by the legislature, all we request for the employee is that the funds that's required for the implementation of the hay study be provided to G M H. The employees of G M H will continue to provide excellence in patient safety and care and fully ensure that joint commission certification will continue with or without the hay study. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nate? Well.
Happy day, Honorable Vice Speaker Cruz and all the honorable senators. Please allow me to present testimony from my General Manager of the Guam Visitors Bureau, Carl Pangolinen. Uh, may proceed.
Please.
Sisus Masi, and thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony relative to the Governor, to Governor Cavos' plan to implement pay raises for the government of Guam employees. For many years, government of Guam employees have been asked to make sacrifices for our island. They continue to make these sacrifices every day to better the lives of our people. Our first responders, for example, go out every single day into the community to ensure that the safety of our people, of you and me, are preserved. During disasters such as typhoons, floods, Guam Homeland Security is staffed twenty-four seven by every single agency in order to respond collectively as a government and restore our island to normalcy. It has been almost a quarter of a century since the employees of the government were given pay raises. Additionally, filing, filling positions with qualified and dedicated individuals has been, uh, a challenge to achieve because wages are not competitive enough to attract qualified individuals some of the time. In fact, one of the hardest working village mayors is San Jose Mayor Robert Hoffman. He is the current mayoral representative that sits on the G B B Board of Directors. On top of his duties he is charged with, uh, in his village, he is the Bureau's Destination Management Committee Chairman. He successfully led many of our destination enhancements projects throughout Timon Bay and the island. One of those projects was battling graffiti and because of Mayor Hopper, uh, Hoffman and his hard work and others that came in the government, we have a system in place to deal with this and many other issues we face to make Guam a better place to live, work, and visit. Uh, today we join our government of Guam brothers and sisters in support of Governor Cavos' plan to raise wages across the government. Uh, this is good for the economy and good for Guam. Uh, that's from my, uh, General Manager, Carl Pangolinen.
Thank you very much.
Would it be able to read my testimony as well?
Please.
Sisus Masi, for allowing me to provide testimony. Sisus Masi for allowing me to provide testimony in support of Governor Cavos' plan to implement the HAEP study pay adjustments for the government of Guam employees. Uh, first, let me say that I'm new to government with my position at the Guam Visitors Bureau being my first experience in the public sector. Before GBB, I, like a lot of the general public, was of the opinion that the Gov Guam workforce was not the hardest working bunch. If you were to ask me if they deserved pay raises at the time, I probably would have most likely said no. Of course, this opinion wasn't based on any hard facts, just on popular stereotypes. After my two and a half years of service, I can honestly say that I was wrong. Gov Guam has a hardworking, dedicated workforce that deserves to be fairly compensated. Just take a look at my teammates at the Bureau. Tourism is a twenty-four seven, three hundred sixty-five type industry that never sleeps. And my staff is always willing to work the long hours and weekends needed to get the job done right. As a manager, in order to get the most out of your employees, it is critical that you provide them with a fair wage and the resources they need to get the job done. Uh, thanks to the leadership of the governor, for the first time since nineteen ninety-one, the government will have the ways and means to make public workers whole, giving them competitive salaries. Uh, many have questioned the large percentage increases, but what do you expect when you haven't implemented raises in over twenty years? It all comes down to trust. The governor said he would pay tax refunds and he did. He has proven time and again to be fiscally responsible. And if he says we can afford to implement the HAEP study plan at this time, uh, we have every reason to believe him. As to whether the Gov Guam employees deserve a pay raise, I say absolutely. It'll lead to a more productive, efficient workforce that better provides services to the people of Guam. Moreover, it'll have a positive effect on the economy, increasing the spending of thousands of Goomanians, leading to a stronger middle class. Uh, once again, Sisus Masi, thank you.
Ms. Perez.
Thank you. Can you hear me now? Hafada, my name is June Perez and I'm here together with Gordon to, um, appeal to all of you, Mr. Vice Speaker, and all of the honorable senators of this wonderful body and, and of our legislature, to please do what you can to work together with each other and with the governor's office and ensure that the government of Guam pay raises are implemented as fairly, uh, uh, as and as quickly as possible. And, and as you do that, please make sure there's funding for the hospital. Uh, somehow, whenever these pay raises do come around every twenty years, um, the hospital somehow is not funded for it, even though the law allows it, we somehow catch up with everybody else years, years later. And, um, this year on February twenty-sixth, we will be celebrating our fiftieth anniversary as a hospital. So for fifty years, for twenty-four seven, every day of the year, for the past fifty years, the Guam Memorial Hospital has served diligently. Uh, you can't find, uh, as, as our colleagues from other agencies have found out for themselves, any more dedicated workers than Gov Guam workers. But I can personally tell you, the most dedicated of all are at the Guam Memorial Hospital. They work with or without pay raises, with or without overtime. They're there until they can leave and, and for a lot, for a lot, especially during, during disasters, during typhoons, during overflows of patients, they just stay and, and continue working. And they don't question anything until, you know, and even after their work is done and, and, and all the controversy about pay raises go, they just continue working. And even when they're left out, they continue working. But this year, as we celebrate our golden year of service to Guam and its wonderful people, we, we ask you to please consider their dedication. Uh, the, the fifty years are now being carried on by, uh, an incredible crew. Um, and, and, and of course, as the island develops and, and as healthcare dynamically changes every day, these qualifications, these, these competencies, these salaries are becoming more and more competitive. And the hospital will continually be challenged to bring the qualified specialists that are needed to run a, a safe and, and, um, unaccredited hospital. Our, our nurses are, are, are becoming more and more competitive, but we have allied health professions, our, our lab, our lab technicians, our respiratory specialists, our rehabilitation specialists, a lot of the, the medical specialties that we need, oncologists, cardiologists, and all of the medical specialties that the people of Guam so urgently need and deserve. The hospital is, 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 will forever be challenged without these pay increases. And so we humbly ask for, for your help in considering, um, all of our, all of our hardworking government employees and of course, to ensure that, that, that the Guam Memorial Hospital is included in, in this incredible move to bring our island up to market in salary and compensation for its hardworking people and workers. Sisus Masi.
Thank you very much. Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Hafada, Vice Speaker Cruz and members of the thirty-second Guam Legislature. My name is Charles H. Adams II, the Executive Manager of the AB One Path International Airport Authority Guam. And I would like to thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony here today. I do not support Bill two sixty-eight as it continues to deprive most, or continues to deprive just compensation to the management and leadership levels who are just also hardworking employees of the government of Guam that have and continue to serve our island within the best of their abilities facing numerous challenges, both physically and operationally. Prior, uh, prior to having the opportunity to lead an autonomous agency, I served twenty years in a line agency with the Office of Civil Defense, ten of those years in a cabinet level position. I was humbled to serve on the National Task Force selected and approved by the White House and several regional advisory councils. I was offered a few employment opportunities, uh, within the, to serve within the federal government. However, as much as I want to provide a better life for my family and more, I would not consider leaving our island home. I'm one of the few of the hardworking employees of the government of Guam that did not leave for a higher paying job. And we all know others that, we all know that there were many others that did. This past November, I was contacted by the United States Department of Homeland Security inquiring about appointment opportunity of a former manager. This person of interest started her new career with FEMA in Honolulu earlier this week, Monday. Her family's still on island and will be relocating this summer after the current, uh, school year ends. In the ten years of management in that organization, there were two challenges with filling classified positions within that organization. One was we were continuing announcing for the position because individuals that, um, that received employment would leave for higher paying jobs once they received, uh, certain certifications and experience with the job. And two, we would underfill the positions because we couldn't attract, um, employment or, uh, the right talent because of the low paying, uh, positions that it offered. When I left that organization after twenty years and three months, I was the longest serving employee of that agency. Today, out of the twelve classified positions, seven of them are filled. Five of the seven has just been filled the past two and a half years. I am full support of the two thousand fourteen HAEP plan as submitted by Governor Cavos and a humbly request that this body, uh, approve it in its current form. Sisus Masi for your time and consideration. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I, I know that we have one more cabinet member.
Um, Mr. S, Mr. Vice Speaker, after, um, they speak, I also would like to have my personal testimony. I was speaking on behalf of the hospital and after, after, of course, they're all done.
To testify this morning. Um, Mr. President of the Guam Housing Corporation, I'm in support of the Governor of Guam's Competitive Wage Act of two thousand and fourteen. Um, this act will provide just compensation to well-deserved government of Guam employees. Our government has done more with less these past years. And it is through the hard work of the government of Guam employees that makes this act all the more fair and reasonable and yet affordable to the government of Guam. Additionally, as, uh, part of my past, a former commissioner of Dedidu, and I recognize the, the many duties and responsibilities that every village mayor and their staff are faced with on a daily basis, weekends included. And it goes for the legislature also. Your day does not end at five o'clock. It never does. It continues. It follows you, uh, to your homes, uh, in many, many, many days. Based on a twelve-hour, uh, workday, um, which is not uncommon, uh, in fact, these hours are considered, uh, normal workday. All the conditions, uh, considered, the cor, current forty-six thousand dollar annual salary of a mayor equates to just about ten dollars and sixty-two cents an hour. Um, not including those days that they are on twenty-four hour call. Um, these are the most important days because normally they are, um, in the middle of a disaster when they're called to serve, uh, those number of, of hours. Um, when you look at that, the numbers there says that, uh, based on, um, on, um, seventy-five thousand dollar proposed annual, um, in, income for the mayors on a twenty-four hour, um, uh, day, it comes out to be about seventeen dollars and fifty cents an hour. So, you know, it's, it's really not much to be giving these people. I know that not all of them work a hundred percent twenty-four hours, but, um, you've got to remember that there's many, many other, uh, aspects of being a, a mayor today. Um, between fundraisers that are going crazy out there, um, other financial responsibilities are almost forced on you. They're not something that you have an option to pay or not to pay or to attend a car wash or not to attend. Uh, it's there. The tickets are there. You're the first to be hit. Then they come to the legislature. You're the second to be hit with these fundraising drives and so forth. It takes a lot of money to be an elected official and most people don't realize that. So I want you to please, um, keep those numbers in mind and, um, uh, give, uh, the, um, Compensation Act of two fourteen a chance. Thank you so much.
Ms. Perez, do I understand you?
Uh, yes, before I go private here, uh, Mr. Vice Speaker, I just want to ask you all to please, uh, save the date, February twenty-sixth. You'll all be invited to our, um, our soft launch of our fiftieth anniversary as a hospital, um, at, at Adalouk. We'll be having a ceremony there and, um, we would be very, we would be very honored also if the legislature would join us with a resolution signing. So we'd like you to all be there and help celebrate the fifty years that I know a lot of you and, and your predecessors have made possible for, for our hospital and for the people of Guam. Okay, this is now, uh, June, the private person. Um, I, I just want to say to please allow, uh, the, the, uh, compensation, uh, package to include not only the, the hardworking classified, uh, employees of Guam, but the, the unclassified. Because not only, uh, it, does it impact the hospital, which a lot of our, our, our doctors and part timers and, and, um, and, uh, hard to recruit positions hold, but, um, they affect, uh, um, the mayors and, uh, and the elected officials, which I value, I personally value. I, um, I've lived away from Guam for, uh, about over ten years, but I've never experienced anyplace more democratic than Guam. And that is a relationship I want to see nurtured and, and, uh, and supported and, and made competitive so that leaders of this great island of ours will want to be leaders, will want to give up their businesses and more lucrative opportunities to dare and go out and help our island. Okay, we, we, we're, government workers and elected leaders are not volunteers. And to expect them to just go out and be all of a sudden humanitarians living off of their wit and whatever inheritance they may have is really unrealistic, uh, for our future as an island. We need to make these positions within, within the government, within elected, within, um, all these elected, uh, positions, uh, uh, marketable enough so people will want to fill those positions. We have great leaders on, on this island, but they also have families and dreams to fulfill and, and we need to compensate them so that their time and, and their personal goals can also be, uh, and their obligations can also be fulfilled along with their, their commitment and dedication to the people of Guam. So, um, I do, I do support definitely the mayors, especially the mayor of Baragata. I, I'm, I'm originally from Timooning. I vote in Timooning, but my Baragata mayor makes sure my house does not flood. And they, and, and, uh, I've worked with all of the mayors professionally in my work as a hospital and I've seen how, how unending their, their duties are. They're, they're, they're just, they're just as demanded upon as, as the hospital and their, their salaries are sad. Uh, and so I do urge that the mayors, the mayors' offices and their employees be, be supported and made whole. And, and also the, um, the, again, the directors and, and all of these, uh, political positions be made marketable, be made attractive. And then lastly, I would like to see you all compensated at a level that, that is worthy of your efforts. But I would also like to see you, uh, you and everyone else, uh, within the government held accountable. Um, there must be a performance evaluation, a report card, if you will, that, that really evaluates the accomplishments that all these elected leaders bring to our, to their position and the services that they do provide to the people of Guam and our island. And so that the voters of Guam don't only go in and, and vote on emotion and, 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 you know, who has made it into their comfort zone, but can go and vote on the facts of what, what you and all of our elected leaders really have done for, 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 for our island. So, um, definitely, uh, compensation with accountability. Our hardworking people of Guam, within the government of Guam deserve it and it'll, it, it will definitely contribute to the economy, to the families, and to just making our island overall greater. Thank you, Sisus Masi.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perez. Uh, any questions? Again, just one last call before I bring the Director of Administration up. Any other person wish to testify? If not, we'll invite, uh, Ms. Mangolney and Mr. Nauta to come forward. Yes. As the, as the Director, um, prepares for her presentation, I'll allow the, um, author of the, uh, Bill two sixty-eight to give his opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for allowing the public to, um, to, to make their presentations, um, in a timely basis. I think it was a, a very, um, cordial and appropriate gesture to our community. Today, we seek to address the truth as it relates the pay of our hardworking employees, our mayors, our agency directors, the elected leaders of our island, and the financial position of the people's government. To date, we have seen the truth distorted in the varying definitions in the words liability, obligation, deficit, and debt, words that all share the same fundamental truth. It is what we owe. We owe our classified and unclassified employees fair pay that reflects their work. We owe our private sector employees a labor environment that offers competitive wages for them as well as, uh, competitive wages for them as well, and this starts with lowering unemployment on Guam. We owe our business community an environment of fairness that promotes their growth on the basis that no one is allowed to break the rules or have special deals because of their connections. We owe our mayors consideration for the work they do, aligned with the expectations of our people and what they believe is reasonable. We owe the victims of our island a legal system that protects our community, punishes our criminals, and promotes feeling safe in our homes and on our streets. We owe our students and our schools ninety million dollars in capital improvement projects so that toilets flush, air cons work, roofs don't leak, and classrooms aren't overcrowded. We owe our students in the north, central, and south new schools now and a spending and development plan to replace all schools before they become a learning hazard. We owe equity to many employees in our judicial branch, Attorney General's Office, and other government positions who have been left out and left behind their on-island peers. We owe our community at least one hundred more police officers, the cars and materials to support them, and streetlights in our villages to deter criminal activity. We owe thirty million and counting to satisfy our LaZon obligations related to our landfill and closure finally to the issue of receivership. We owe education, health, and public safety a fully funded allotment schedule so that salaries are paid in full. salaries are paid in full, materials are paid for on time, and operations are not put at risk. We owe our people a healthcare system that is not propped up on loans, late vendor payments, and a blind eye to the rising costs of medical care to our people. Above all, we owe the people of Guam a government, economy, and future outlook that reflects an improvement in their quality of life based on hard data and provable statistics. None of these things that we owe go away if we call it a liability, obligation, deficit, or debt. It is what we owe. It doesn't magically disappear with the next tax refund press release, and it certainly must not get swept away in the passion of election-year politics. All of these must be considered in the context of what we are looking at with Bill two sixty-eight. That includes follow-through and pay for all of our rank-and-file employees, a reasonable increase for mayors, performance-based pay raises for our governor, lieutenant governor, and agency directors and deputy directors to ensure that unemployment goes down, crime goes down, healthcare costs are under control, student test scores go up, and education, health, and public safety are fully funded, and no increase for senators. This will set us on a course to make good on what we obligated ourselves to with respect to pay, and make quality of life not just a catchphrase, but an expectation tied to management compensation. We have a duty to make sure we can afford this, and we have a duty to make sure that when we spend the people's money, we are improving their lives. We must approach this in the context of everything else that needs to be done on Guam, and we need to do it free of fear and political consequence. This isn't a game. This is people's lives. It's not about you and me or what any one of us can get at the expense of another, but what we must do to build a responsible Guam. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Nicholas. Um, Ms. Mangloonie, uh when we had the hearing last week, you were presented with a letter from, or before that, the hearing, inviting you to the hearing last week, a letter from my office asking for certain documents, comparisons. During the hearing last week, there were questions about trying to do comparisons. Um, I know Chairman Pangolinan had um a letter that he sent to you, um, or at least I forwarded a letter that he sent to me, to you, asking for some kind of documentation to show how we're going to be able to afford this, what's the plan on how to, how everybody's going to get slotted, that so that we don't have what we had last, last year with the meritorious pay where certain agencies got twenty years and the rest of the government got four, uh where law enforcement salaries for certain groups got all four years and s- ADAG and the judiciary got nothing for theirs. I think you heard the hospital saying, yes, I mean, you had two of them. I mean, they they testified three times. Uh, you know, I mean, a personal capacity as a hospital, as the representing the employees, they want their increases. Are are they going to get some assistance to make sure that their their, the increases that are are being planned in this are going to be able to be afforded at the hospital? Or is it just going to be Department of Administration and a few other agencies that are going to get money? We need to have some some numbers. Um, and um, I know that this morning, the Speaker and I signed off on a joint letter asking for much the same thing. So I'm hoping that in your testimony today that you will provide us with this information. Um, you did last night give us a couple of things, but it really didn't answer the questions. I didn't get the comparison that I thought that we had asked uh from Mr. Nauta about what the twenty-ten plan had, what the twenty-fourteen plan had. Um, it wasn't I who brought it to the public's attention. It was one of the mayors that mentioned that in the twenty-ten plan, it was sixty-five, and somehow it got to seventy-five in the fourteen. I thought Mr. Nauta had told us that there were no changes, that it was exactly the same thing, save for some uh for adding the senators in. I, we need to, we need some of this comparison to be able to make an informed decision. We can't just, you know, take it on faith. That's good for Sunday, but for right now, we have to make a decision, and we, we need hard numbers so that we can make an intelligent decision on how we go forward and how we assure that everybody is lifted from this and not just a few. And uh, but we have, we have nothing. You, we also asked about the implementation plan, and last night you provided us with what is denoted as the draft of the twenty-ten compensation study implementation, and I know that when Senator Lamarena was speaking, he was saying that, well, yeah, uh, there was going to be some discussion about the im- implementation plan, and and I noted that on page forty-one of the presentation that you had prepared for the governor, there was some mention about uh a third-party review process is currently being developed between DOE and CSC. Um, where is that? Um, he was, as the director of, executive director of CSC, he couldn't tell us that that had been finalized. I know a number of us are interested, and I know a number of employees are trying, are interested. Um, you heard from Nadine talk about the fact that uh there was a whole group at Behavioral Wellness that had not been um addressed in the twenty-ten plan and are still not, or at least she doesn't believe they've been in- included in this. We need some assurances from you. You've heard all the testimony that's been provided today, I, and I'm hoping that you address it, because, I mean, even as it relates to the the CSC, I think you end your, in your recommendation, um, on page forty-five of your recommendation, decisions made, not ready to be released yet, an appeal process to be administered after initial transition of employees into the pay plan, we'll work with CSC in a collaborative effort to address all complaints, but it's not, um, it's not there. And so, and we've set up the screen, because I I noted that what you gave us last night was obviously a PowerPoint presentation, so the staff can help you uh connect if you need to to connect, so that the public can see this presentation that you, it was obvious that this is the presentation you gave the governor before the time was given out, and thank you for providing us the same thing unedited, because now we saw what was not, what you were recommending and what he made the decisions on. And so, if if we could hook up and you could do the presentation to them...
Senator, before I go to the presentation, I'm invited to, I want to talk about Bill two sixty-eight, if I may.
Please.
Yes. Um, buenos and hafas de to all the members of this uh body. Um, we thank you for the opportunity to provide, provide comments on Bill two sixty-eight dash thirty-two, which is an act to approve the Department of Administration's implementation plans of the government of Guam Competitive Wage Act of twenty-fourteen, to require a performance-based standards for directors and deputy directors of line agencies and Imagalahin and Isigundu Magalahin. The Department of Administration wishes to express to the legislature that we support Sections one, three, nine, and ten of the bill. However, we have several concerns with Sections four, five, six, and seven of the bill since it seeks to modify the plan submitted by the governor.
Not yet. Let it, let it finish, and then we'll call you back.
Pursuant to Section two of Chapter eleven of Public Law thirty-two dash sixty-eight, to the extent that we believe is not reasonable. We are pleased that in Section two legislative findings and intent, the bill recognizes that classified and unclassified employees have patiently waited for raises in their salaries, and in this bill is to approve the implementation plan. Moreover, that Section three states that His Latura approves the general pay plan, nurse pay plan, educator pay plan, and the attorney pay plan. However, these are only part of the plan submitted by the governor, and the bill further adds some components that we believe are unreasonable and not applied consistently as it leaves out criteria for increasing senatorial raises. Section three of the bill does not approve the executive pay plan. Section four of the bill, however, references Section five, which is the executive pay plan. Therefore, executive positions will not have a play, pay plan should this become law. We make, we recommend the approval of the executive pay plan. Section five of the bill modifies the governor's plan by changing the proposed salaries for various rate of positions. It proposes to keep the method of determining senators' pay pursuant to existing law, which is fifty percent of the superior court judge's salary. However, the bill proposes to change the mayors' and vice-mayor salaries by adding only, by adding ten thousand to their current salaries. Mayor salaries would change from forty-six thousand per annum to fifty-six thousand, and vice-mayor salaries would change from forty-two thousand to fifty-two thousand. The bill's salary recommendation for the mayor is close to the twenty-ten recommendation of fifty-five thousand. The bill's recommendation for vice-mayor, however, is significantly lower than what was recommended in twenty-ten, which was forty-nine thousand eight hundred. As for the positions of governor, lieutenant governor, attorney general, public auditor, directors, and deputy directors, the bill seeks to tie the higher proposed pay to meeting performance pay plan criteria. Thus, in order for these positions to earn any and all of that difference in salary between what these positions currently pay and the proposed salaries, the performance plan would need to be met, which is outlined in Section seven. Sections four, six, and seven of the bill seek to create an executive performance pay plan whereby the positions under Exhibit five A would earn their increased salaries based on this uh executive performance plan. The increased salaries would be the difference between the current salaries of the positions under Exhibit five A and the new salaries. The difference in salaries would be maintained in a separate fund. If any of these positions do not meet the criteria indicated on the PPP, the funds reserved for the increase in salaries would be transferred out to the supplemental appropriations revenue fund for appropriation by the legislature. Section seven lists five criteria which must be separately accomplished by the positions of governor, lieutenant governor, attorney general, public auditor, directors, and deputy directors in order to see an increase in their respective salaries. The lowering of the unemployment rate, the lowering of the cost of medical care, and the lowering of crime rate based on the previous time period are examples of the criteria stated in the bill. Looking at the powers and responsibilities of each of these positions, not one of them has direct responsibility or control over all these factors. From a human resources perspective, performance evaluations are supposed to be based on performance standards, which are criteria or expectations established by management, which determine level of satisfactory performance based on the quality, quantity, timeliness, and manner of performance for job tasks. These standards must be observable, clear, specific, realistic, and easy to follow over the rating period in order to properly evaluate an individual. From the standpoint of tying higher pay with criteria delineated in Section seven, we believe it to be inappropriate. Four of the positions are elected positions whereby the voters of Guam decide on the performance of the individuals who hold these positions through our elective process. As for the positions of director and deputy director, there is an existing law. Article two of Chapter forty-three of Title V Guam Code annotated entitled "Performance Evaluations of Agency Heads," which would be better served to be amended instead of indicating this in the bill. This law presently applies to those agency heads that are governed by boards. The law could be amended to cover all directors and deputy directors so that movement in steps is tied to performance, but again, not to the performance criteria stated in the bill. Our department, however, still maintains its position of fully implementing the salaries for the positions mentioned in Section seven. Section eight seeks to adopt a salary increment schedule for all employees, which includes unclassified positions. Personally, the government follows a previously established civil service commission policy, which indicates that management may appoint someone in the unclassified service from steps one through ten in the applicable pay grade, and may have the employee's uh pay adjustment at any time up to step ten. However, movement beyond step ten is based on a work performance evaluation every two years. By indicating all employees, most especially those in the unclassified service, being required a one-step salary increment for satisfactory performance brings employees holding this type of appointment one step closer to becoming almost indistinguishable from those in the classified service, and may go into question their unclassified status pursuant to the Hauser case. This Guam Supreme Court case basically ruled that persons appointed to positions in the government by all intensive purposes should be ruled in the, should be in the classified service unless otherwise impractical. This could lead to a violation of separation of powers where the governor would no longer have the flexibility to hire temporarily to fulfill a short-term emergency need. We thank you for the opportunity to express our comments on Bill two sixty-eight, and hope that you consider our comments and recommendations. Sajid Smasi.
Thank you very much, um, Ms. Mangloonie. Um, along with Bill two sixty-eight, just the implementation, um, we still need to get back to, to one other thing. Is there, and have you been able to get into your software to be able to do the side-by-side comparison of the twenty-ten plan and the twenty-fourteen plan to show where there are differences, if there are? But it would seem to me that there should be some comparison to show that there, if there isn't, then then just say there isn't, though when you, when Shane did say last week that there were no changes, uh even your own testimony today, you you talk about the difference in the, in the mayor ones. I, I'm not the one that was bringing it. I didn't realize that there was a difference, because I'm still not been able to figure out where to find those differences. But now you've brought it up. What other differences are there, and is there some document that does a side-by-side so we as senators can say, this is what twenty, twenty-ten said, this is what twenty-fourteen is suggesting, and we can ask you, why did you make this change from twenty-ten in his twenty-fourteen plan?
Senator, we, we, we can go through the presentation, and it will highlight some of the the changes from twenty-ten to twenty-fourteen.
All right. I I just cannot believe that we run government without having done that kind of analysis. And also, in my letter, in Speaker Ben's letter, and in Speaker Wampat's letter, we asked about the cost. Surely, there must be some kind of, you've done the cost analysis, and you've broken it out and said, in order to be able to underwrite this implementation, DOE with its three thousand employees will need X number of additional dollars in the coming year. Um, this department's going to need X number of dollars. Do we have a breakdown of how much this is going to cost the hospital when when this is implemented?
Well, Senator, um, it, it, in the budget bill that was passed, there was an allocation of funding, and the the allocation of funding, that's what we're going to release... that's what we're going to release to those agencies that, that you had delineated in, in the, in your appropriation bill. And when the twenty-ten hay plan was, was, was passed back in, in August two thousand and ten, those, those breakdown was not, was not submitted by, by Department of Administration. That was my understanding. And that, that, the total estimated cost is not far off from what it was in twenty-ten. The total cost, which included unclassified, was twenty million. And this body appropriated thirteen million for the classified employees back in twenty-ten.
I understand what we may have done in twenty-ten.
Yes.
This is now, now it's twenty-fourteen.
That's, you're correct.
We need to know. You guys did an excellent job in twenty-eleven and twenty-twelve in keep getting control of everything. You got Standard and Poor's to extol the fact that you withdrew the implementation of the hay plan. And in the, in the report from Standard and Poor's in twenty-eleven and in twenty-twelve, it goes on and on about the great financial management being implemented by the government of Guam, and that's why you guys got an increased rating. I'm just wondering, how are they going to view this? And do we have something that we can show, or you can show them in justification this coming year, that yes, we may have not implemented it in twenty-eleven and twenty-twelve and twenty-thirteen, but we can show that we can, we can and should implement it in twenty-fourteen, and these are the numbers. Do we have anything that shows that?
We, we have given you, Senator, the numbers that it's going to cost about twenty million dollars. And when we, and it's, and this is very simple because when the plan was approved back in twenty-ten, if you will recall, you were a member of this body, August twenty-ten, August, August two thousand and ten, the deficit was over three hundred million dollars. The, the monthly tracking report for the revenue for year-to-date versus the adopted revenue was negative sixty-eight million dollars. Tax refund owed was over three hundred million dollars. And in the same month, this body appropriated thirteen million dollars for the hay plan. Fast forward to twenty-fourteen, we have eliminated the, the deficit. We have paid our tax refunds. We are more current in our vendor payables. And you have appropriated seven million dollars. So this is the best time. You, you have given the money to appropriate this plan, to, to move forward with the plan. And I don't see what the problem is now.
We've appropriated seven million dollars.
That's right.
And I'm just saying, how is that seven million dollars going to be allocated? I know we, we had some breakdowns. I'm concerned now about the hospital. Because I've seen the way that the administration has behaved in the last year. They implemented the meritorious.
Which was, we have, we have given.
You implemented the meritorious increases.
And have assisted the hospital in every way possible we can. We have given them cash on a, on a weekly basis.
And will they be able to implement this plan if it's approved? Will they have enough money to be able to do?
They will get their allocation and what, what was appropriated for them. My job is to give them the cash and, and, and whatever is the allotment that, that is given to DOA for the release, that, that is my, my responsibility.
I understand that there's a difference between allotment, appropriation, and what the, what the cost is going to be. Do you know how much this plan is going to cost for the hospital to implement? Is the appropriation sufficient? And even if the appropriation is sufficient, is the allotment going to be, from BBMR and you, going to be sufficient to pay? Or is there going to be a ten percent holdback, retention, plus other kinds of things? Or, or it's in excess of what the appro, yeah, we've only appropriated twenty-eight million dollars to the hospital, so it's not going to be sufficient to, to cover this? And tough. They're going to be like the law, the investigators at the AG's office?
That's not, that's.
That keep coming to us and saying.
The AG's investigators, they have been paid. They're going to be paid if they have not already received their pay.
When?
I said they will be paid if they have not already received their pay.
Okay, because I'm just saying, that was three months afterwards, and we got seventeen letters from each one of them. So I'm just trying to figure out.
If, if you'll recall that the, the, the AG's office through this body, they handle their, their finances.
I realize that, but you guys.
We assist them, but we still, despite this body taking the powers away from us, we still assist them.
Do you give them more money than is appropriated to them?
No.
Do you give them more money than is allotted?
No.
Is that, all right, then I'm just saying, so how do you say that you're assisting? I just say, if, if, if they needed more money, then I can understand.
Whatever is authorized, whatever is there that I can give, I give.
And so I'm trying to figure out, are we going to be equitable in the implementation of this? Or are we going to find out again, like we have with the, with the judiciary, that they haven't been able to pay their employees because of the fact that they didn't get the additional funds that everybody else had?
I believe that there will be equity.
In that, everybody's going to be, supposed to be getting their pay, but, pay increases, but there isn't going to be sufficient allotment to them to, to make it realized? I, I just need some, some, some figures. How, why is it that you won't give us the numbers for each one of the agencies? Surely, you've slotted it. If you say it's going to cost twenty million, surely you have some kind of study that says, for this agency, it's going to be this much, for this agency, it's going to be this much? Or is this just going to be, I woke up like last Christmas, everybody's getting the meritorious bonus and every, but only certain ones, and the rest of the DOE ones could go take a hike someplace and wait until they, they finally get it? What, there, what plan do we have that, that's going to assure us that everybody is going to be treated in, equitably? At the same time, not five or seven months later, or a year and a half later? Do you have?
I can assure you that it's not going to be a year later. That's why we, we have the phase-in.
For the executive agencies? Is the phase-in going to be the same thing for DOE?
We will give them their allotment, they, they will be the ones that will input them.
Would their allotment be sufficient to meet the needs of this increase? And this increase that is being planned? How much is it going to cost DOE?
We will give them the allotment based on the allocation.
How much is it going to cost DOE to implement this?
I don't have that total figure right now.
You're asking us to approve a plan, and you're testifying in front of those cameras?
Yes.
That you do not have the number, the amount for?
We have, we have the allocation for, for that total.
How much is it going to cost? Not how much are you going to allot to them? How much have your people, both your HR and your financial people, calculated to be the need to implement the plan for DOE? And how much is there that's going to be given to DOE to realize that plan? You have a separate plan here for the, for the educators. How much is that going to be? How hard is that question to answer? And how can you expect us to approve it when we, you won't give us an answer to that very simple, the educator plan?
Well, you just, like I said, you, you gave the allocation, and we will base it on the allocation of what was appropriated.
But is the allocation sufficient?
We will, we will base.
We know that it's going to cost twenty million.
You had appropriated, and we based our, our allocation based on what was allocated back in twenty-ten. It's, it's fairly the same.
Is that twenty million going to be able to cover the retirement fund contributions with this new increase?
That includes the retirement fund contribution.
The twenty million?
If, if I could just ask one question here, just one question. The governor's recommending that you, you, that you're going to implement the educator pay at a hundred percent. What is that number? What is that hundred percent number cost? And how can you recommend it if you don't know what that cost is? How can you recommend to implement it a hundred percent if you don't know what that number is?
I know the total amount.
What is the total amount?
The, the total amount for the, for, for this plan is twenty million.
No, what is the total amount for the implementation at a hundred percent of the educator plan?
I can't give you that number right now.
So how do you rec, why do you recommend it? Why is that part of, why is that implementation that the governor's saying it's going to be a hundred percent, and you don't know what that number is?
I know that, that the total, that total cost is, is twenty million.
No, but the governor is saying, in his implementation plan, to, to implement a hundred percent of the education pay scale. What is that number? What is, what is a hundred percent of the implement?
If he's saying that, that the educate, the educator plan will be implemented a hundred percent. So that's what we, we're going to ensure that that happens.
I know, but can you tell us what that number is?
Like I said.
So the governor's recommending it and doesn't know what he's recommending? Doesn't know how much?
He is recommending something that he knows that can happen.
What, what is it?
I am tell, I'm giving you the number of twenty million?
No, that's the hundred percent of the entire, no. The governor is saying, implement the educator plan at a hundred percent. How much is that going to cost? And what, is the governor recommending something that he doesn't know what the cost is going to be? Is, did DOA recommend that and, and did not tell the governor that that's the cost? Mr. Nauta, what is the cost of the implementation of a hundred percent of the educator plan? Mr. Nauta?
The total amount is, is twenty million, based on the general slotting.
Educator, educator plan itself, only the educator component? You don't know?
We have the, the, the general slotting of what the total amount is going to cost.
What is that going to be?
It's twenty million.
No, for the educator plan.
But, you know, we will ensure that whatever is allotted.
Number for the educator plan? Mr. Nauta, do you know that number? Was that calculation done? I don't have the number with me. Can you go get it?
Call the office and have it brought over.
Let's just recess, then we go get it.
It can be emailed down or just called. There's a hundred percent for the nurses' plan, and I know the hospital wants to know whether or not the nurses' plan is going to be covered. How much is that going to cost?
And we know that the nurses' number is, is very minimal. So that's why we are paying the nurses a hundred percent.
How much is that? Minimal is, is, is really?
I don't have that in front of me. All I know is I have, I know that the total cost is going to be twenty million. So, you know, the, the bill before us is the approval of the, of this pay plan.
I, I, I understand what, what the bill before us is. But also, we want to know how to be able to implement it. Because you're asking us that by the fourteenth, or by tomorrow, if we don't do anything by the fourteenth.
That's our role. You, you appropriate the fund, the, the money, and it's our role.
And we want to know how much more do we need to appropriate to be able to meet the needs of this?
So you appropriated seven million, and that's what?
And how much more, how much do we need to, to appropriate before the fourteenth? So we can get the first, I think you're planning on fifty percent? Was, was that what the plan is in the implementation? And then the second half is going to be August? How much, how much do, how much do we need to appropriate? We're the one that's supposed to appropriate. Tell us how much to appropriate.
Yeah, well, you, you, you do the math. It's twenty million for, for one year. And then you appropriate it seven million.
That was the governor's number in his budget. He submitted the seven million dollar number. The legislature had, had originally recommended ten million dollars for three quarters of the year. And the governor, in his budget, that he vetoed, when he vetoed the legislature's budget and resubmitted his budget, reduced the ten million dollar number, almost eleven, down to seven.
Unless any others members want to jump in, please? Because I'm just still trying, unfortunately, I'm trying to deal with evidence. And all I want is just something that shows me it's going to cost this much for DOE, it's going to cost this much for administration. Because I don't want to get a year-end report like we did this last year. The Department of Administration, the, the department responsible for money in this government ended up with a sixteen million dollar deficit. Because it decided that it was going to do the meritorious plan under its appropriation and grossly exceeded its appropriation by sixteen million.
That's not under Department of Administration. That's a, that's how it was reported, that's a line item.
I did prepare the report.
But, but it is, it is.
You prepared the report, and the report that you prepared is submitted.
It is a line, it is a line item.
Yes, and I'm just saying, it shows that you ended up the year with sixteen million dollars debt, over expenditure.
It was recommended by our auditors to, to, to report. It could have been allocated to, to all the entire government of Guam agencies, but, but it's for reporting purposes.
I understand, and all I'm saying is we need to know because I don't want to, again, ever receive a year-end report of an agency that's under my oversight and jurisdiction over-expending its appropriation by sixteen million dollars.
We, we didn't, Senator, with all due respect, we didn't overspend our, our, our budget. We have, we had authority to pay those merit bonuses, the deserving of Guam employees.
I, I don't doubt.
That have been owed for over twenty years.
But the appropriation for your department did not include that thirteen million dollars. Okay, so I'm just asking.
There was a provision in the budget that we could pay it, and that was what we based our payment on.
Tell us how much we need to appropriate so you don't have a negative balance again when you decide to pull this off.
So give me a little, give me some time, and I'll run the numbers and.
You, you've had since last Friday, that's the same thing that?
I'm telling you what it is now, but, but, you know, you, you still, you're not satisfied. I'm telling you that.
That the total is not, is going to be twenty million, admittedly. But how much are the individual departments? And is there going to be sufficient amount so that you're going to be able to give DOE that amount? Because that was not the experience, not their experience with, with the meritorious pay. Was it? Did they get the full twenty-one years?
Well, you asked DOE how, how they manage their records because maybe they couldn't go back and calculate those years.
Did they get the sufficient amount of money?
I can speak for the operation of DOE. I gave what was allotted to them.
And how much was allotted to you to be able to do the, the additional thirteen million?
There was authority in the budget to pay it.
But you couldn't do the same thing for DOE?
It, it wasn't, it wasn't directly appropriated to DOA.
And I'm trying to make sure that we don't have this same fiasco again. All I'm asking is how much is the breakdown for each one of the agencies?
For now, we, we are appropriate, I mean, we are allocating the seven million. And if, if it comes, if it shows that we're going to need additional appropriation, then by all means, we'll let you know.
Mr. Nauta, did you not calculate these? I mean, you're giving yourself an increase to the T. So surely, you've done some kind of computation? You're not a political appointee like she is. You're, you have the qualifications. We need the numbers.
You're insinuating that the pay grade for the position I hold would have any bearing on this discussion? Just for me personally, Senator, those kinds of comments I don't appreciate. But to speak to the number, you know, the director has the authority for the Department of Administration. She says the number is twenty million aggregate, and that's the number she's giving.
But, but you're the, the human resources administrator. In preparing the recommendation to her, in preparing the numbers and saying you're, we're going to be able to pull this off, how much did you figure in your calculations when you made the presentation to her? Or did you not present any numbers to her, just went in and said, implement it? when you made the presentation to her, or did you not present any numbers to her, just went in and said, "Implement it"? God, I hope you had more in your recommendation to her. Please. What was the number, what were the numbers for the, each of the various departments within agents and agencies, including the autonomous agency of, of, of the branch of the judiciary? How much did you guys figure it was gonna cost? You had the judiciary in this plan. How much did you figure it was gonna cost for them to implement it?
Again, Senator, the director has made the statement as far as the costs, um, so I'm gonna have to default to her statement of the costs.
Is the director re- uh, instructing you to refuse to answer that question? Can you just ask her? That you want to answer the question, you wanna be honest with this body?
No, Senator, the director is not instructing me to answer, uh-
Alright, then can you just ask her, can you release the information?
She will make that decision, Senator.
Yes, I know, so I'm asking you to ask her right now.
Uh, I believe she can, you can ask her, Senator.
Ms. Maglonia, if Mister Nauta provided calculations on what the hundred percent cost to the implementation of the educator plan and the nursing plan, and he presented that number to you, would you please instruct him to tell it to this body?
Well, like I have stated, that the total cost is-
My question, that's not, I know what you're answering, but that's not the question. The question is, the governor recommended that you implement a hundred percent of the educator plan, a hundred percent of the nursing plan, and a hundred percent of the attorney plan. What is the cost of implementing those plans on February fourteenth at a hundred percent?
Okay, Senator, um, I'm not prepared to give you that response immediately, like, like right now.
Did Mister Nauta give you that recommendation? Did Mister Nauta do-
Like right now, we would, we would have to go back and, and look at the system.
So how could you recommend it if you, if you didn't even, if you don't know that number?
We are recommending because I'm, I am- I am giving you the total number.
We're not asking for the total number.
But, but how, how did you get to that total number? There's, there had to be breakdowns. There had to be breakdowns for each one of the, the departments in order to get to the twenty.
I understand, but I, like, I'm telling you, I don't have that, that breakdown with me.
But how did you get to the twenty?
Can you go get it?
The total is, is twenty million.
No, ma- you're saying implement a hundred percent?
It's three o'clock, we'll, we'll take recess for one, and one hour. Come back with the, the calculations for each of the departments, thank you.
And, and, and the fifty percent implementation?
No, you will come back at four o'clock and report to us what you have, because if you have twenty million, it didn't just fall from the sky that this was the number. You had to have one plus five plus four plus eight plus two in order to get to twenty. From what? How did you get to twenty?
Senator, can, can, may I ask you something?
Yes.
Back in twenty-ten, you didn't ask any of these questions. You approved the plan and you let the administration handle it. When our finances was in terrible shape.
I, I, I will admit that.
And now that we're much better-
And I'm just asking, just tell me where that number came from.
We, we have been, we have done well in managing this cash.
Get, just get us the number.
And we will allocate what is appropriated, and if there's any need for, if, if any agency is short, the governor has the transfer authority.
Did the governor transfer some money to D, to the judiciary to make the payments for the-
Yes, thanks to the T E F F.
That's right, thanks to the recommendation you had to adopt that number as the ju-
No, that was not the recommendation.
That was the recommendation of the Department of, of Department of Administration, Rev. Tax, and B B M R, that that number would be collected. You can go back to the Special Economic Service meeting, that's the number. We asked that question, Ms. Maglonia, we'll, we'll pull out the record, we have the records and the quotes as well. So, again, the governor is recommending allocations at a hundred percent for the implementation of those three plans.
And we will ensure that that happens.
And fifty percent, and fifty percent of the, uh, general pay plan. Can you just give us the, what that number is?
So, my, my, my job is to ensure that that happens.
No, and my job is to know what that number is from you after doing those calculations.
You have already given your number, with all due respect, Senator, you gave the seven million dollars and you made the allocation to each different category, so that's what we will just disperse.
And I wanna know if that number is sufficient to make it a hundred percent of those pay plan and fifty percent of the general plan. I don't know that because you're not giving a-
Approve, approve this plan because this is a start.
Yes, and so are we gonna start?
And if we know that it's not gonna be sufficient, we, I will be the first one to come back and ask for more.
I'm telling you, he's saying, "Give me this, because, this pay plan, because this is the number I need, I wanna know those numbers."
Yeah, and the number is twenty million for one year.
That's not what I'm asking, he's not, he's not recommending a hundred percent implementation. He's recommending a hundred percent of the three pay plans and fifty percent of the general pay plan.
That's correct, because it's based on what we have, we have, uh, we have knocked out in our cash flow.
And that, and we're asking if that told- And we're asking if that's gonna total the appropriation contained, and you have to tell us those numbers.
Well, seven million it will be.
Then give us the number.
I am giving you the numbers, I'm giving you the total numbers.
Okay, Senator.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I've been listening intently, I just wanna ask, um, two questions that might help us make a decision. I know that there's been a call for recess and for numbers that, uh, may be forthcoming. You opened your testimony, uh, Ms. Maglonia, with your concerns on the bill before us, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so your concerns with the bill before us will be part of the record for us to deliberate. Absent the details, um, and that, of course, will be before our body, would it then be your testimony, as you've stated, uh, the differential between the twenty-ten and the current, um, implementation would be forthcoming if this body were to approve the plan as submitted? Because I'm just, what I'm trying to get to, Ms. Maglonia, and I'm, in all fairness to the work that's been done, in all fairness to whatever transpires in the next hour, two hours, three hours, when we go back into session to deal with the matter before us, what you seem to be stating for the record here now is that based on the twenty-ten approval authorization, the subsequent rescinding, and then now the twenty-fourteen plan that's been worked on, is we have a choice before us to approve or allow the plan to go into effect. And I guess the details would be forthcoming at that time if we were to choose as a body to do that or to pass this bill and take it on ourselves to basically adjust the plan.
Yes.
I just wanted that for the record, because it, it's clear that, um, you know, if that, if that is where we are, we have a self-imposed timeline as put forth by the bill before us. So we both have a responsibility and obligation, we'll see what happens in the next couple of hours. But I, I think that it's only fair to state that where we are right now is our introduction of a bill, this body's introduction of a bill, your presentation, you had a presentation, obviously, we haven't gone through that yet. Uh, but I wanted to just make sure it's clear on the record where we're at at this time for the benefit of the public and the body. Thank you, Ms. Maglonia, for your testimony.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, you know, all, this entire dialogue and the realities that our school system is facing, what that we've all read about in the media, is one of the reasons why I'm sticking language in here on the performance plan side to make sure that education, health, and public safety are fully funded or no one gets their raises, and I kinda wanna bring the conversation back to that. Because right now, we're talking about thirty, forty thousand dollar raises for management. And we cannot even get the answer as to whether or not we have all the funds to pay for the education portion of this plan. We're just being told, "Trust us", and the reality is in education right now is they're not even making their full payroll, they're only doing net pay. We're paying forty-three thousand dollars in interest to the retirement fund because we're withholding the retirement fund portion of the contributions for education right now. So right now, in this trust-us environment, education is already being short-changed. And we're asking, we're being asked by the governor to just trust, trust him, because even you're saying you're just trusting him, because you can't give the breakdown on the individual number categories. So we're all saying, "Trust the governor, he's gonna just follow through", but even right now in the current environment, we're not making it. And that's one of the reasons why I wanna stick this performance language in here. I mean, certainly, if we're not making it now, we shouldn't be getting raises now either, unless we're fully funding education, health, and public safety. And you know, I, there was testimony earlier today, Mister Chairman, from, um, other individuals that said, "Oh, what does this have to do with my department and what does that have to do with my department"? It has everything to do with this entire government. Because as you're talking about in, in allotments and making payments go to one place or another, if one agency can save money, that's a dollar that can go from that agency to education, to not only meet the priorities that we're coming short on right now, but to meet the future priorities that we're going to be creating with this obligation. Every other agency can look at how they can save money, cut costs, improve efficiencies, downsize even if they have to, to get money into education, health, and public safety. So I, I, I really, I really, um, appreciate the, um, tenacity of my colleagues in trying to get to the bottom of what, what's the education numbers? What's the nurse numbers and how do we come to twenty million? You know, if we came to an aggregate, I mean, you guys are numbers experts too, if we come to an aggregate, surely there's a breakdown. How do we get to that aggregate twenty million? And all my colleagues are asking is, can you please show us that breakdown that got us to that aggregate? And if we came to that aggregate responsibly, if we came to twenty million dollars responsibly, surely we should have a breakdown somewhere. So, um, I appreciate the chairman's, um, suggestion that we recess for an hour and we await, uh, those numbers, because, I mean, that's an important component of all of this.
I understand, Senator, and if I may, I'd like to make a comment to your comment about, uh, education, uh, I'm sure that you were here back in twenty-ten. The condition of education, you go back to twenty-ten, what was the condition of, uh, Department of Education? Was it, was that that time when they put the education in, um, third party? They were having a lot of problems?
Do we wanna go back to that, Benita?
And, and fast forward now?
Do we wanna go back to those days?
Much better now?
Do we wanna go back to those days?
Well, those were the days when the hay plan was approved, that was my point.
Well, I, I wasn't, I wasn't a part of that, but I'm very grateful-
Just thirteen million dollars that this body appropriated.
I'm very grateful that my colleagues at this time, right now, today, we're talking about today. We're talking about making sure that in the future, we don't go there again.
Yeah, and then two years later, two years later, the senators got their pay increase.
You know, you, you keep throwing all of these distractions out there, Benita, but we're talking about-
No, no, it's not a distraction, this is part of the component, that's why these people that have been waiting for twenty years, what, what are we, what are we gonna say to them? No, you didn't deserve the pay raise?
Absolutely not, as a matter of fact, the bill-
They, they don't deserve it?
The bill is saying they're going to get it, but-
Oh, but, but you said that, absolutely not, they don't deserve it, that's what you just said.
No, that, that's not what I said, Benita. I'm saying absolutely not, we're not saying they don't deserve their raise.
Okay.
Okay, and, and I, I actually lead that our government employees, classified and unclassified, with the exception of management, absolutely deserve a raise.
Okay.
What we wanna make sure of is that the money is going-
So, let's, let's proceed and give them their raise.
No, what we wanna make sure of is that the numbers you're giving us-
We're, we're just here to, to, to have your blessing, to implement the plan.
We just wanna make sure the numbers you're giving us are going to be sufficient for the promises we're making.
Obviously, you, you had the numbers when you approved the budget back in third, in last year.
We want the numbers for this proposal, the budget that we approved last year was not for this proposal. And the responsible thing that we wanna do is not make empty promises to people. Is that, is that what the governor wants to do? Because when we're asking for these numbers, we just wanna make sure that we're gonna be able to fulfill those promises.
Have the governor given empty promises? He is the one that has fulfilled the empty promises of the past.
I will go right back down my testimony, I can go right back down the list on my testimony.
Go back, go back to the last three years of what has happened.
Benita-
The taxpayers have gotten their money.
The governor borrowed money on the bond market, he transferred deposits, you know that. And you're playing on the definitions of different words to try and trick our people into thinking-
It's called management of finance.
It's called reclassification of obligations.
And you should know that because you're a banker.
I do, and that's why we're asking you questions.
And what do people do when they have, when they're financially in trouble?
They, they take out a mortgage to pay off the credit card.
They go to the bank, right, and they reorganize their finances, and that's what exactly Gulf Guam has done.
And we wanna make sure we don't go back to that, Benita, that's why we're asking for these numbers.
And that's why we're paying all these liabilities. This is gonna be a liability down the line if we don't address the needs of all these people.
You're absolutely right, and we wanna make sure that we're gonna be able to recap.
These classified and unclassified employees that have been waiting.
Absolutely, they have been waiting, and we don't want them to wait anymore.
And the governor's promise back in twenty-eleven, if you will recall, twenty-eleven, January, we are suspending the hay plant because we're going to stabilize this government. This is, we are here three years later. And he has fulfilled that promise.
And all we're asking- All we're asking is for the numbers that you guys have to reflect that commitment.
Okay.
We, we suspended the hay plan so we could pay a twenty million dollar increase in health insurance cost of this government. This year, we could pay twenty million-
That is absolutely incorrect, Senator.
This year, we can pay twenty million dollars full implementation of the hay. If the governor had gone through a single option, a single option of the-
Who was responsible, Senator? Who was responsible for the negotiation of the twenty-ten insurance?
A single option of the health insurance with the savings of twenty million. If the governor had chosen that, we could have paid the hay study fully.
Senator, with all due respect, it was not him who negotiated that.
I'm saying he made the decision to increase our costs for twenty million dollars on health insurance and not pay the hay study.
That's not right.
Thank you, um, Mister Chair, thank you, Benita Shane, for, uh, your testimony. I, 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 first off, I just wanted to make clear that I'm, I'm not a H R expert, and none of us are H R experts, and I wanna thank the D O A personnel for, uh, all the hard work throughout the years putting this plan together. As I understand too, even with, we looked at the, uh, ten-ten-ten or the forty plan with our public safety officials, that was a plan put in place, it took many years to address, but it was a plan, and now the plan was fulfilled. So, uh, I, I, I use that scenario to address that this is a plan, of course. We're looking at numbers that may not be sufficient to some of my colleagues at this time, but as you stated, we may have to come back to address, uh, fully, uh, getting all, uh, sectors of the government, uh, their increases. But of course, it's a plan and, and I, I thank you for all putting that in place. I have the, uh, a quick question, because I think a lot of this has spun to a, a level of concern, uh, I think when we first addressed the first hay plan that was, uh, approved by this body, I, I wasn't part of that body, but, uh, that's why I thanked, I thanked you the first time around, Benita, and the administration for being very inclusive and including all sectors of the government, all local branches of the government, to include the un- unclassified employees, to include the, uh, elected officials, our mayors. Uh, thank you for including the senators. And, uh, even, even with the current pay plan, I'm kind of still puzzled that, even with this new study, I'm kind of puzzled at the fact that the governor would still not be the highest paid on this island, in the government of Guam. So that's still something that, uh, bothers me, uh, regardless of if it's Republican or Democrat. I think, uh, the governor of Guam should be the highest paid of this government. With that said, I have a question, and I think Shane, this is why you're here. When it comes down to, uh, um, how you were, how this study came about and, uh, looking at making these pay adjustments based on, uh, um, their job descriptions and all that, I, I want you to explain, uh, for the general public and for our colleagues, to include, uh, the mayors. Or maybe we should start with the mayors, and then start, and then go on to senators, and then go on to governor. So that the general public could understand how and why those adjustments were made, and what comparisons, what was it based on? So that our general public could understand, because it, it, it calls the question in, in many of our general, uh, to our general public, uh, uh, why these huge adjustments, or it may seem to the Joe across the street that this seems really unreasonable, but I hope you can explain, uh, starting with the mayors and going with the senators and then with the administration, especially with the governor and lieutenant governor.
Okay, Senator, to answer your question, um, the first thing that needs to be said about, uh, positions like your senators, all, all elected officials, uh, the biggest thing that makes it hard to peg salaries for your positions are the political factors that go into play. Uh, a lot of the studies that I've read, I've been pegged senator salaries in six figures easily, same with the governors, same with, uh, cabinet members, same with mayors. But because of the different political, uh, factors taken into consideration in each district, uh, one of the titles of the studies I read were, I mean, you know, senator increases lag behind inflation, behind market, behind, behind similar jobs, the, or jobs of similar size, but would be a political firestorm, um, uh, should it be implemented. And, and, you know, those are just facts. Uh, other studies I've read have shown that, uh, legislator salaries have, have lagged, uh, in the last twenty years, uh, with inflation. Uh, average salaries twenty years ago might have been somewhere around. Uh, average salaries twenty years ago might have been somewhere around uh closer to seventy thousand, but has slowly diminished based on, um, of course, the public perspective. Uh, that in and of itself made it difficult uh for our, our office, and similarly with HAY, uh, in twenty ten, I had a lot of conversations um with them on how to peg that. I, I was curious on how they pegged that. Uh, you know, they were contracted to try and come up with a salary for the President of the United States. And so, I mean, uh, just looking at the HAY method of evaluation for the jobs, I mean, the size of that job, quantifying it in points, the salary attached to those job sizes are just uh huge. And for, for senators as well, uh, and, and I know it is a contentious issue, and you know, our office comes from the standpoint of, you know, what the data is showing, and I know Senator Limptiaki, they bring up a certain uh salary level we're looking at, and, and it is, it is accurate. Um, the other part that makes it really difficult is each district has its own set of uh laws that uh give other benefits to senators, um, similarly with the governors. Some governors get planes, some don't, some get helicopters. Trying to quantify that into a compensation package um here on this island is very difficult. Uh, and, and from the standpoint of our office, that's what we dealt with, uh, and, and you know, we do appreciate, you know, we know you guys do get a lot of um uh slack for, but we wanted to at least have a number to present um out there. And as far as our office is concerned, trying to wrap that up into a, a single salary is difficult. I mean, uh, easily based on what, what's done in every district, legislators, governors, um, well into the six figures. Um, hard to quantify the uh, both the personal aspect and the professional aspect of the job. Uh, so it is very difficult, but that's the rationale, the methodology we used to try and do it. If we were just to use job size alone, um, using the HAY method to create a grade of sorts for, for uh your types of positions, I mean, it's, it's, it's huge. Um, it's stuff that you wouldn't see in the classified service, uh, jobs that big. Um, you know, we'll cap off at a certain point for our classified positions, but for yourselves, um, you know, it'll be off the charts, as HAY put it, you know, it's always off the charts. Uh, so of course, you have to rely on data that's presented um for, uh, you know, places like National Legislators Association, uh, Book of States, Council of State Governments, you know, they, they, they track, you know, pay on that level. And um, you know, they, every three or five years or so, they put out reports to try and give you a trend analysis for what's looking at. But uh, I mean, as a statement, uh, for all elected officials, from a technical aspect, everyone's underpaid, um, based on the size of the job that they have. That's the perspective that HR looks at. Um, you know, we try not to, you know, we know that the political factors take, um, you know, consideration when actually approving the pay, but from the technical aspect, that's what we're looking at. And I'm, you know, senators, uh, we wouldn't even try to imagine all the different aspects. Uh, we wouldn't even be able to ask you to fill out a position description, because I'm sure it would be miles long, um, as far as what you guys do on a daily basis. Um, so just looking at the, the size of, uh, you know, other legislative jobs and the salaries, that's how we go. Same with the mayors, um, same with the governors. So that's, that's Senator, that's the rationale that we come from.
Thank you, Shane, I just, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to call that question. That is the question that's been lingering out there, and I want the, the general public to understand that this was done by uh, uh, the great workers of DOA and done by a professional HR consultant that helped address this, this, these numbers were not put in place by ourselves with our, 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 our salaries, uh, and as far as the mayors, and that's why I'm critical to, uh, or very sensitive to what the adjustments calls for with our mayors, because this was done by uh, uh, yourselves and HR and um professional HR consultant to ensure that it was adequately addressed and fairly compensated. So, thank you, Benita, thank you, Shane, for uh your time here and providing the, us with some uh information that we can work with.
Um, Senator, thank you for those comments. I'd, I'd like to thank my, my HR staff because they were the ones that recommended to include the elected leaders, and uh they're the ones with the know-how of, of, you know, trying to measure what, what the, the elected leader's pay should be, and so they did the research, and that's why I'm saying that, you know, it's thousands of documents that they have to see through and, and, and you know, review the study of, of what HAY did back in twenty ten and incorporate with additional review and know-how of what they have done on a daily basis. And that's, you know, it is difficult when you're asking for what is the methodology, it is difficult because these are the people that do it on a daily basis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And so Shane, just based on that, so based on your work, based on your analysis, the, the uh, the number that you came up, uh, as it relates to senatorial pay, uh, according to the National Congress of State Legislatures, would put us, Guam senators, the second highest paid senators, legislators in the entire United States and all US territories? Based on base salary?
Based on, uh, based on base salary, yes, um, not to include all other kind of benefits that are built into the compensation package for those legislators.
Okay, thank you, Senator.
And in the, um, in your comparison with the other se- um legislators throughout the country, you are, how many of those are part-time and how many of those are full-time? And, and was that taken into account?
Yes, actually, uh, what you'll see is um the, the full-time or the professional legislators uh constitute the top five salaries that you'll see in the national um salaries. Uh, you know, the, the salaries themselves range from like a dollar a year to all the way up to ninety-five thousand a year. Uh, so some of the studies they looked at, uh, kind of tried to separate the legislators between professional, uh, part-time, and then you have your, what they called your community legislators, where they have a full-time job that they're able to sustain themselves with, and they just come in maybe twice a year and, you know, uh, vote on issues. Uh, so when you're looking at your professional legislature, legislators, it's, it's those that perform it for so much of the time that it basically is their livelihood, uh, they wouldn't be able to survive without it. So, uh, that, that comparator to, to our local legislature here that, uh, you know, basically works on a twenty-four hour basis, right? Um, that, that's kind of where we were looking at, and the, the top five in the nation to include California were full-time legislators, legislators like our own.
Just one other thing, Benita, um, I join you in commending your staff. Because as you say, they went through thousands of pages and compiled the information. I'm just asking, can you share their compilation with us so we can see what the comparisons are? It would make things so much easier for us if we didn't have to deal with this on faith and just had hard documentation before us that showed what the comparisons are, so we know that there was, that the, it's, it is exactly the same thing as in twenty ten as in twenty fourteen, uh, it's fine. So did they do anything in the interim? It's sounding like you're saying that over the last three years, yes, they were doing, they went through thousands of pages to make some changes. What were those changes? That's the one thing we keep asking. What were the changes, if there were changes? Number two, with all the compilations, how much is it going to cost and what, can we just see what that is? I don't understand why that should be, you know, more state secret than things that Snowden can release from NSA. It's just trying to make us informed.
Senator, it's, it's not as simple as, as, as what, what you think, you know, for trying to extract the information, but uh, given the short amount of time you're giving, you know, we will try, but I can't make any promises, but you know, I gave, I gave you the total amount, and uh...
But that twenty came from somewhere. It came from because DOE was going to cost X number. It came because this was gonna be this one.
Actually, the calculation was done back in twenty ten and was suspended, and that was the number.
So you just adopted twenty ten?
No, because there was, there have been some adjustments, but...
Wha- what were the adjustments and how?
Like I said, I, I can try to provide it, but um I would have to go back with the staff and try to extract the information.
Senator McCraven?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, uh, or Mr. Vice Speaker. Um, I, I made my comments last week pretty clear that I thought that, that I first of all thanked DOA for, for all their tireless, tireless work and, and the, the pushback that, that you're getting, and you're, you're still maintaining, um, what I think is, is um transparency through the process of where you're at today. Um, and, and when you simplify the complex and, and you, and you think, and you think of this as, as say a household income, and, and when you're, when you're not doing so good and times are tough, you cut back, you take out some of the things that you enjoy or you need, and you just go with, with what you absolutely need, and then when you get your finances back in order, obviously, you, you, you're doing better and, and, and you can provide more. So I mean, it's pretty simple when you look at it. Uh, the government is doing a lot better than it was in twenty ten or twenty eleven when we rescinded the, the HAY study, uh, pay raises, and now it's time to implement it. Um, but you did say, uh, earlier that your seven million may or may not be enough. You're probably leaning towards it may, you may come back and ask for more. Um, do you, do you have any projection of how much more you would ask for? Is there something that you can kind of give us that if seven million's not enough, what do you think would be enough?
Well, we're, we're waiting for this body to approve this plan, and we'll have to, then we will do the slotting, and uh, like I said, uh, we will try to um live within the, what is appropriated, and, and if there's an absolute must, that we have, we, we have to come back, then we will come back, but we will try to live within the amount that was appropriated.
And it was suggested earlier that we take a one-hour recess to find through that twenty million, what the number is for uh, uh, the hospital or, or DOE. Um, how long did it take to come up with the HAY study recommendations or your, your, your recommendations? Did it take longer than, is it gonna take longer than an hour?
Uh, I would think so.
Is that something that, that, that is uh, on, that we can accomplish in one hour?
Uh, I don't think I can come back in an hour and produce it.
Okay, so that would be a waste of time if we, we recessed for an hour?
I can give...
You wouldn't have the, you wouldn't have the documents that are being requested, correct?
Uh, we would have to go back to the system and try to extract...
But an hour would...
I, I don't think that, uh, one hour would do justice.
Okay. Can we go back to the, um, to the portion in your testimony where you started and you, you spoke about what you did approve in, in this legislation, Bill two sixty-eight? I know you said you, you, you had some sections that you were not opposed to. Can, can you re, can you reiterate what, what those sections were? And, and, and what you would, what would be your recommendations to the, to the sections that you, you do oppose?
Well, of course, it's, it's implementing the uh, the uh classified and unclassified
So you, you said you, you don't oppose section one?
No, I don't. Section two, I don't oppose, no.
Section three?
No.
Section four?
No, I, I have objection with section four.
Okay, so what would you suggest that we do with section four?
Uh, I have my, my, this testimony that I will provide, and then you can go through that, yes.
Oh, okay, you haven't provided this, okay. Section five?
Yeah. Senator, I, we can, I'll just provide...
Well, this might be quicker if we just go through it now. That's why I'm asking you to do it again, just to, yeah, I'm asking if we can do it.
It's quicker if we do it again?
Okay, yeah.
Evaluation, that's basically my objection.
Okay, so you would delete the whole?
And just, you know, it's simple, just, just approve the plan that we have... Already programming the system for implementation.
And if we tinker with it? Or if, if, if some of the body tinkers with it? And that's February fourteenth threshold arrives? Obviously, that's gonna be a delay, correct?
That's correct.
Now, how long a delay are we looking at if there is a tinker job by the legislator?
I have no idea how long the delay is, depend, depends on how much tinkering the legislator does.
Thank you, Mr. Chief.
Thank you, just, just so that you don't think that these are just my questions, Benita. I got this email just now from a Guam employee. Hafdi, Senator Cruz, I would like your assistance in obtaining clarification on the proposed Government Competitive Wage Act twenty fourteen. Number one, the proposed plan downgraded the pay grade slash classification of an environmental health specialist one, two and three from grades K, L and M to J, K and L. Exhibit one of the October twenty-one, twenty-ten transition to the new HAY plan show the positions for environmental health specialists two and three still maintain their current grade of L and M. Note B, note that some of the position titles in the proposed pay plan are sequential on the pay grades and others are not. Why? Exhibit two of engineering A, two and three, and D and E, while the payroll clerk is one, two and three, are F, H and I, while the environmental health specialists one, two and three are J, K and L. In through two, in addition, since DOA is proposing to implement the full salary increase to government Guam employees, for example, nurses, teachers and lawyers, will the government of Guam provide retroactive pay to the rest of the employees since the majority of the employees will only be getting half the proposed wage increases? Do you want to answer that for the employee?
Shane and I will answer parts of it.
Okay. I, I, just on the pay grade side, and um, thank you, Senator, for bringing up, tho- those are the requests um that I was stating, uh, we received in twenty-ten when we weren't able to fully implement the appeal process. Uh, so this time around, um, uh, when we're looking at the appeal process, we, we're gonna take all those requests in, um, and we know that a lot of employees have questions about that. And we'll go through the evaluation method, uh, again, with their documentation and documentation that was used back in twenty-ten. Um, and, you know, it'd basically be an administrative review of their pay grade.
I understand. Maybe I mis, misheard you last Friday. I thought your testimony to us last week was that the grades, the pay grades in twenty, the twenty-ten plan and the twenty-fourteen plan are exactly the same.
There, there were, um, uh, through the usual process, I remember I was trying to um separate the two processes, one with the study that was implemented in twenty-ten and then rescinded. Uh, basically, when the executive order rescinded the study, um, you know, we had no authorization to continue on that process. So essentially, what had happened was everyone went back to uh nine-thirty, um, to twenty-ten, I believe, um, prior to when the HAY study began. So everyone's pay grades were basically reset to what they had. Uh, we still had on file all the grades that were evaluated, but we had no authorization to move forward to have the appeal process because the plan in and of itself was, was rescinded. So, we know that, uh, those types of requests, um, did come in, and that's why we do work with the, um, employees, and I know you heard Mrs. Peta said, uh, she was communicating with our department on a daily basis, even outside of the study, these requests come in, and it's things we try to address. Uh, so when we're looking at the transition, um, it's definitely what the appeal process is gonna be built for. Uh, in twenty-ten, we had an appeal process that only included DOA. Uh, this time around, uh, based on feedback from employees as well, uh, you know, we are collaborating with CSE, and you know, the, like Senator Lamrenne said, uh, looking at jurisdictions and trying to work it out with the commission, but um, to, to the extent, uh, once the plan's implemented and the appeal process is, is, uh, is put out there for employees to use, uh, we would take that request in, uh, and any kind of documentation that they wanna, um, we're gonna set out forms and everything once we get the system up and running, um, where they can go ahead and make their appeal, uh, turn in any documentation they need to, and we'll look at both what they turned in and what was done in twenty-ten and determine whether there's an adjustment needed.
I, I understand. Now, I'm trying to ask, besides the environmental health specialists? And I'm getting lots from public health and social services complaining about, uh, in different divisions, including whether or not even the doctors at public health are included in this plan? What changes were made between the HAY plan as we approved in twenty-ten? And this HAY plan that you are now proposing to us for twenty-fourteen? What other positions besides the environmental health specialists, which this employee has pointed out, has changed, uh, been downgraded? Which other ones were downgraded? Which ones were upgraded? And why were those changes made? I thought you said there were no changes.
Right, to the recommendations that were of twenty-ten. The changes you'll see are, for instance, and will stay in the same series. Uh, recently, uh, and I believe Senator Rodriguez was a part of the whole process, uh, we, uh, we created a whole new series for public health, environmental health protection officers. Uh, they're basically almost similar to the environmental health specialists, but now they're created specifically for public health. In that law that authorized us to go ahead and work with public health and create that series, you see a whole new series with a whole new range of grades. That, because our mandates require us to, to compile a list of all positions, you'll see that those positions are there, and we did go through a long process to get the pay grades pegged. Uh, so, uh, to answer your question, from twenty-ten going forward, we never stopped doing what our mandates ask us to do, which is to review pay grades on a daily basis. And if other laws do come out that create new positions... And if other laws do come out that create new positions, uh, that's what we'll go ahead and do. So requests never stop coming in. Um, other autonomous agencies, actually GMH was, uh, really good, they created a, a lot of positions to address their needs, um, up at the hospital. Uh, they're required to file it with us, so we keep that on hand, so that's part of our list. So, uh, when you're looking at a comprehensive list, list of what's affected, um, it could've been from the usual pay grade reassignment process, could've been a law that was created, or it could've been, um, any other instance where a department would request us to review a position. So those are the types of changes, and I was trying to explain that, uh, on Friday, that apart from the study itself, we're required to maintain that list on a, on a daily basis. So when people file, uh, people, when departments file with us, you know, we include it on the list. So when you see changes, that's what you're gonna look at.
And that's what we want to see. We want to see what the differences are between what was proposed by HAY in twenty-ten and what you are proposing to us now in twenty-fourteen. You've made all those changes, you have, I hope, somewhere in your system, that comparison of where the differences are and some annotation off to the side or a footnote that this was made because we changed environmental specialists to environmental health inspectors, or whatever. But we just need to know what the changes are because it, there's, it's obvious that it's not the same, it's not the same plan that, that we approved in twenty-ten.
So the comprehensive list contains everything, um, that we updated and also the positions that were downgraded. So when you're looking at, uh, that request there, uh, basically, and it's kinda hard to...
So who has the comprehensive list? Is there, is there?
It's, it's kinda hard to frame in, in, in an actual statement because when we rescinded the plan and we brought everyone back to their current pay grades, um, the list, when you're looking at changes, uh, you know, we went back to pay grades prior to the study. We have a list of pay grades we did in twenty-ten, we have a list of pay grades we update and amend on a daily basis. It's a very comprehensive list.
I, I understand, and all I'm asking is, can we, can we see that? So that we know that besides the environmental health specialist, we have the communicable disease group, where I got eleven emails from every single one of their employees, you know, with the doc. What, what else has been done with this plan that is different? So that we can see it. All I'm trying to say is, can I just see it to see what the differences are?
And I did tell the director, we are working on getting it, Senator. It's, it's not an easy system to work with. Uh, you know, when we were headed the duties from the Civil Service Commission, there were a lot of pending things that we had to go ahead and reconcile. It's not an easy system to work with, we are working on it. Uh, you know, we did put out the comprehensive lists so that there's something for employees to reference. You won't see it in their personal actions now and their pay grades now because they're holding the, uh, grades that were done prior to the study.
It was obviously, this thing was presented to the governor, right? When you presented this to the governor, did you guys present to him, these were the changes that were made between twenty-ten and twenty-fourteen? And this is what's going to make this more expensive or less expensive than the twenty million?
As, as far as the pay grades are concerned, Senator? Is, uh, just limiting it to the pay grade discussion? Um, well, uh, that's consistent with, um, well, at least I haven't been in that long, but all the governors we have, the, the governors basically delegate that duty to the director, and then she de, then delegates it to us. The, I mean, within any organization, right, uh, gubernatorial, um, you know, you look at the bigger issues. The list of pay grades themselves, Senator? No, the governor won't review those, he, the mandates are with the director.
I know some, some don't like to look at the minutia.
Right.
Unfortunately, I do. I can see the big picture, but I also want to see the, the, the individual lines, I mean.
And we are working on it. We are working on it, and I told Benita we will get it.
Benita didn't realize that I read the, the statements, and she was shocked when I berated her the first time about having a nineteen million dollar entry that they didn't, they didn't catch. I read.
Right. And, and we are, we are working on it, Senator.
And I saw it at the end of the year, and so I'm just saying, provide this to me because I want to read it so that I feel that I'm informed.
We are working on it, Senator, and to sift through it and to separate it so it'll be something easy to digest. It is a big system. I mean, uh, you're looking at, uh, in total, over three thousand positions with documentation that's, that's uploaded into the system, Senator. We're working on it, um, and, you know, that's as much as we can do right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Shane, remember last Friday I asked about, um, the twenty-ten submission you had, uh, current, right? So is that what you're saying you're working on? The, because I think, not just for, for us, but I think the employees, to make it easier for them to say, okay, they're, 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 um, N or M, this is what it is today, with this, the new, and this is what, you know, this is the, the new scale. So is that something that's, um, being worked on?
It, it is, and, uh, what makes it, uh, cause the altogether request was to look at it and the justification behind the changes. So when looking at the justification, um, that's where the tedious part comes in. Uh, every change has a rationale to it, especially in job evaluation, when you're looking at know-how, problem solving, and accountability. Um, each of them have to have a rationale. When the committees were formed in twenty-ten, they were led by our staff, um, and that rationale was recorded, um, when we tried to archive. So when trying to break it down, um, into rationalizing what happened to the grades, um, so that, uh, you know, the senators can look through it, um, you know, that's, that's the tedious task ahead of us.
So, so absent the, the justification, do you, is that something you, you'll be able to, to show, though? I mean, just at least that?
Um, you know, what'll happen, and, and I know a lot of this revolves around requests that do come in, and, and thank you, Senator, for sharing the email. It gives us a little more insight on, you know, uh, employees and how they're looking at it. It, it's, you know, when we receive those requests, and that's why we're really looking at the appeal process, um, and, um, you know, there's not too many things you can do with an appeal process for a pay grade evaluation. It's, it's a pretty, um, it's a pretty standard system. So we need those requests to come in, um, uh, you know, employees right now, and this is just a typical, um, issues that are raised when they call our office. Uh, you know, say they're a pay grade M right now and they see that maybe the pay grade is downgraded to an L, um, and they wanna know why. You know, uh, there, as in ninety-one, there were certain policies that were built to make sure that they're not adversely affected. That's always been maintained. Um, and so when talking about the actual job size in the grade, that's what we need the process for because we need to collect the actual information, uh, just like Mr. Peta said, if nothing was ever submitted, then we need to see that. We do need to give them the opportunity. And so to answer your, your, your question too, Senator, um, trying to compile that list while we're trying to also prepare the system for the appeal process, um, you know, you start mixing logics in the, in the, in the software and then it gets a little... We wouldn't wanna give you something to read that wouldn't make any sense while trying to justify it. Um, you know, the justification for these grades will come up during the appeal process then. I mean, hopefully that answers your question, and I'm trying to shed light on what we're actually working with, um, to put out the pay grades.
Sure, okay, so, um, going to the appeal process, right? Um, if someone, if we've implemented this and they have, and they have, um, and they wanna appeal it, is there a timeframe where this is gonna be, is this specific concern's gonna be reviewed, or is it open-ended?
Uh, just looking at other appeal processes and trying to develop this one, uh, yes, you definitely gotta give a timeframe, uh, so that, you know, everyone knows how long they have to prepare things. Uh, a lot of agencies that we've talked to, their employees are actually ready. Uh, so, you know, we say, okay, once the appeal process is, uh, up and running, you have the vehicle to go ahead and put your request in. And, you know, we do consult with employees on a daily basis outside of the process, or the, uh, the study, on their pay grades anyways. So when we do get requests to look at their pay grades, uh, say we get a request last year, we have a current evaluation that we can use.
So do you have the guidelines for that appeal process already?
Um, right now, we're, you know, we're working on it with, um, uh, CSE. I know, uh, Mr. Lammerina said he hasn't seen the actual process, you know, working with his staff. Uh, you know, they were, uh, recommending to us to, uh, model it after the grievance process. So we're looking at the grievance process and we're also looking at other state jurisdictions on how they handle the transition of the, of new pay plans and appeals that were done. Uh, you know, some districts were really draconian and they said, okay, you have three months and you're done.
Okay, so just finally, so shouldn't we, if we adopt this, adopt that, that procedure's in here now so at least employees will have some sense of comfort knowing that there is gonna be a process, this process is gonna take X amount of days to, to adjudicate?
Um, you know, there, there were, you, you can do that, and I'm not saying you can't. I mean, you can, uh, tack a timeline on the appeal process in the bill, um, um, you know, that can be done. Trying to make sure that the policy fits, um, exactly what's happened to, um, the plan itself, uh, and trying to work out the jurisdictions with CSE, that was our main concern. Um, you know, only because we don't know what's gonna be approved. Uh, just like in twenty-ten, uh, you know, when we were getting, doing all the research and the, the budget that came out, we were like, oh, whoa, there's thirteen million there. So, okay, now we, you know, gotta get ready to implement. So, uh, you can, I'm not saying you can't, this body definitely can put a timeframe on the appeal process, um...
So what, what is your recommended, um, timeframe? I mean, to give enough time to actually, you know, you know, to, to give your guys enough time to, to look at every appeal? Because you don't know how many, I'm sure you're gonna get a lot. But what is the timeframe from once an employee submits a, an appeal, a request for review? What is it, sixty days, ninety days?
Um, we're looking at, we're also trying to look at how many, um, requests we've gotten since twenty-ten. Uh, so, you know, the last appeal process took three years. Uh, we're not looking, uh, anywhere near that because employees do need, uh, you know, closure on what's gonna happen. Um, you know, as far as an appropriate timeframe, uh, we would always hope to get it done within this year so that once full implementations realize that these employees know what their greater, grades are gonna be. Um, you know, I'd be optimistic saying that, you know, we can run through all of that at the same time as implementing and doing everything else. But, uh, ideally, we'd be looking at that within the year of finishing the appeal process so that employees have it. But again, employees do need, uh, enough of, uh, time to prepare the documents if they've never done it. Um, you know, on a daily basis, we'll be sitting down with them, this is what you need, uh, please turn this in, this is what you fill out. A lot of times, employees have problems filling out the forms, you know, the position descriptions that we use to do this. So we do have to walk them through it, and that's why it does take a lot of time.
So a minimum, would, would ninety days be a minimum? Would that something fair?
Ooh, um, for the employees, maybe not ninety days. Uh, I know a lot of them will probably need a little bit more than three months to, um, go through that process of filling them out. Uh, and we'd also have to go out and educate, um, the departments themselves, the admin people, personnel people. So just to get the logistics going, uh, ninety days wouldn't be enough for, for that process to be completed.
So minimum, you're saying six months, maybe?
Uh, I wanna, I'd like to tag it, uh, but, uh, logistically, I wouldn't see how. Um, within the year, so anywhere between now and December would probably be best.
Okay, thank you.
Honest answer.
Thank you for that very honest answer, but how can we start a process that we don't have the rules on?
And, yeah, and, you know, my answer, Senator, and, and I said this, um, uh, last Friday, uh, you know, from our perspective, these plans, even in ninety-one, um, you know, they were, in and of themselves, the, the main form of the plan was approved. It was always left up to the HR offices to, to work out the, the nitty-gritty of, of slotting and, and implementing. And, you know, that's not to say that this body wouldn't be able to do it because this body has exercised its authority on compensation and classification before. All we're saying is that it's usually left up to us, we do work with the employees, uh, on the ground level and see these things happening. That, that's all we're saying.
Before you had the meeting last Thursday with the HR people, how many times had you met with the HR people in the various departments talking about the implementation of this plan?
Uh, informally, uh, quite a few, uh, when they see me in the hallway, when they see me, um, anywhere, um, you know, they always ask me about it. And I say, you know, a lot of things in twenty-ten, uh, will probably remain the same, but I don't make those decisions. Um, and so, uh, formally, we couldn't really call meetings. Um, you know, a lot of them were asking us, what are we looking at? I said, well, twenty-ten's the framework, uh, the policies and procedures for twenty-ten are the framework for what we're looking at now. Some of it worked, some of it didn't. Um, you know, I, I know you guys got a lot of complaints about frozen salaries and things, uh, you know, those are, those are the issues we were working with. The actual policies and procedures themselves, um, in our eyes and in our practice, because we've been dinged on it before, we wouldn't be able to issue those and tell employees, well, this is what's gonna happen to you, um, without the actual authority to issue the policy.
But before last Thursday, did, what formal meetings did you have with the HR people? Because I've had several HR heads and in fact, had, had the departments who have HR divisions within them tell me that there, there was no, there were no meetings with DOA. Is that correct?
Right, because, uh, prior to that, we had no authorization, um, to even discuss, uh, what it, what was rescinded in twenty-ten or twenty-eleven. Uh, just based on analysis, Senator. Um, it wasn't, it wa... Well, that in and of itself is a recommendation that, um, you know, we need authority. When we're talking pay grades and policies and procedures for slotting employees, that we would need the authority to do based on a plan that was rescinded. Um, the analysis for elected officials, uh, I mean, we can do that any day, um, and recommend it. Well, no, because we're talking actual slotting of employees, Senator. So we wouldn't wanna tell, you know, an employee that came in to, to go ahead and, uh, yeah, we're gonna slot you here when we don't have the authority or the backing to do it. And, and that's, that's where we're coming from, Senator.
Done the work to do it.
I'm sorry?
You could've done the work to do it, to make the recommendation, when it's ready.
Oh, yeah, and we, I guess you can say that's a fair assessment, but, um, we had no, uh, directive to push us that way, Senator.
Well, you, you had no directive to change it, but nothing preventing you from...
I guess you can look at it any which way you want, Senator.
Ms. Chairman?
Ms. Chairman, last week we were told by you, Shane, that, uh, whatever was adopted in two thousand and ten, it's not gonna change and that we just should adopt what the administration is asking us to adopt based on, uh, the department administration's, uh, recommendation.
Are you talking about the policies and procedures?
I'm talking about the HAY study, uh, in general.
Yeah, no, I didn't mean that statement, Senator.
Last week you said that it's the same plan, two thousand and fourteen plan is the same plan as two thousand and ten. And then when, uh, we had asked to give us a copy of that plan, uh, you said you just have to trust us and that you didn't want to, uh, expose any plan because you didn't want the employees to have any, uh, false, uh, expectations.
I did say false expectations, Senator, I never said, um, you trust us, actually, I think that was you. Senator, what I said, for the, for the policies and procedures?
No, 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 it wasn't me, what, what, what a colleague said was trust, but verify, but I'm...
What I said is, um, they will not be the same as twenty-ten.
Not the policies and procedures, but the actual pay, uh, HAY plan that set up what those positions would be compensated.
Right.
You said that it's exactly the same as two thousand and ten.
I think what was confused was my discussion between, uh, you know, how pay grades change via the study or via the daily process. And, um, I was trying to clarify that, uh, and I wasn't allowed to.
Who didn't allow you to clarify?
Well, other conversations and questions came up, so I wasn't allowed to give the full explanation, which is what I was trying to clarify today, um, with the email that Senator Cruz was mentioning. And so, um, just, you know, by the mere fact that the statement of the twenty-ten rules, uh, sorry, policies and procedures wouldn't be the same, um, you know, is our statement that some things may change. Um, what we turned in, in and of itself...
We were talking about those compensation levels for the positions. Did any of those compensation levels for any of those positions that were adopted in two thousand and ten, did any of those positions get changed in two thousand and fourteen by, by your division? Uh, by your own methodology in determining, uh, what these positions should be paid?
Right, and the question I gave was, um, on a daily basis, we do, we do that review, Senator. So could something have changed? It could have. Uh, is there justification behind it? A department or an agency would've creas, uh, requested a creation of a position or an amendment or a reassignment pay grade, and we could've done that. Um, but that's what we, that's what we do.
You're saying you can't provide that information to this committee? You're saying that those positions may have changed, but you can't provide that information?
Senator, it's, you know, and I'm not gonna downplay the importance of it, but it is a lot of work. That's what I'm trying to get across to you. To say that we wouldn't purposely provide it is erroneous. Um, if you like, you can come down to our office and we can show you what we do with it. But if not, then I believe that's our statement.
So how do you then propose to, uh, implement this by February fourteen? If, uh, your system is so complex that it, uh, prevents you from being discussed about it?
Because we, we built it, Senator, to work that way. Um, it implements when we finally get a framework of what we're gonna do. And if you would like to sit down with us and we can show you. Okay, so then, you would have to accept my, accept my explanation because I'm inviting you to show you what kinda work is involved. The staff that are here can do it.
I'll come with you, I'll follow you up.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea, Mr. Chairman, then.
Yes, and, uh, and if you guys want, we can show you guys how to evaluate jobs and the documentation we use.
Well, now you're being, uh, condescending.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, no, because I want, I need this body to understand what's going on here.
Can we punch in a position and then that, that pain, that step will be, will come up?
No, it's not that easy, Senator. And, um, you know, all I'm trying, all I'm trying to do, Senator, is explain to you, it is a very difficult process. We're not trying to hide something from you or tell you that, uh, we're not gonna come out with something. There's a lot of justification for changes that are made, Senator.
So how would the different, uh, ASO know?
If you would like to see...
How would the different, uh, personnel specialists in the departments and agencies know, uh, what to amend, uh, GG one so that they can be paid pursuant to, uh, this plan that was adopted?
If you ask them, Senator, you know what they're gonna tell you? We call DOA. That's what they're gonna tell you, because that's what my staff do on a daily basis. They ask us for our guidance and expertise. To question that here, and, you know, that's why I'm inviting you to see the process, I believe it's, um, taking it out of context for, for, for what might've been done, you know, and we're, you know, I thought we were limiting the discussion to the bill.
But this is not just, uh, individual positions or, or that were, that were recruited and, uh, selected and, uh, there's not a, it's not a new GG one. This, this is across the board, uh, pay adjustments pursuant to this reclassification paid at... This, this, this is across the board, uh, pay adjustments pursuant to this reclassification paid at, uh-
Mm-hmm. And we'd like to show you-
So, how, how?
How many actions we need to amend. Uh, for instance, when we rescinded, uh, the plan in two thousand and eleven, uh, any individual employee that had any actions that took place between October first and January eleventh, we would have had to amend thousands of actions. Changes could have been made, Senator. Um, the, the nitty gritty of that, though, is mandated to us to handle. That's why I don't understand what the question is about, um, you know, what's changed and what hasn't changed. You know, we do this on a daily basis, we're not trying to hide anything, we're just telling you, it is a lot of work to put it together. And, I mean, Benita can attest to that, uh, she calls me on a daily basis, asking me for things. I can't even get to it because we're trying to do that. And so, that's all I'm trying to say, that's all I'm trying to say. Um, and as far as my statement on the pay grades and everything, that is my official statement, Senator.
Is that why then it's difficult to, um, do an itemized breakdown by agency of what it would cost by department? Because, because the system is so complex that it doesn't provide for that?
Um, I'll let the director answer that question, Senator, it is a complex system, I'm not gonna even, you know, that's why I invited you down to see what happens. Um, and to meet the people who do the work, and they can tell you what the employees are saying.
Uh, Senator, uh, you had, uh, what HR is, uh, will do when this, uh, plan is approved is go to each agency and have an education process to, um, to go through the, the documentations and what the, what's, what, uh, each, uh, agency needs to know and, and if there's, uh, and they will explain the appeal process if some, if the employees don't agree with, with the slotting and, you know, what the position has been slotted for. So, so that was, that is the plan, once this, uh, plan is approved, is they will go on the road and, and, uh, go through each agency.
But how are they gonna explain an appeals process that is not in place?
It will be.
In two days, three days, four days?
It will, it will be in place.
Five days?
I have a lot of, I have a lot of faith-
Seven days? Eight days?
I have a lot of faith in my staff.
Ten days?
If it needs them to stay on weekend, eve-
Thirteen days? Fourteen days?
It will be done, Senator. With all due respect, I have a lot of faith in my staff.
I understand, but I'm just saying, how long? If you're, you're saying that it's gonna be implemented within the fourteen, by the fourteenth, and that they will know what their appeals process is, but you don't know what that is yet. Are you gonna have it done by the fourteenth so they can then explain it?
I mean, it, it's, uh, it's ironic, because when this, this plan was approved back in twenty-ten, the appeals process was not even in place.
And it should be in place now, maybe that was a mistake.
So, we are working on it.
Right, so let's correct it right now. And let's, let's have something in writing that would give some guidance to the employees.
They, they have been working on it, Senator, and they've been, they've been discussing, communicating with CSC to have this process in place.
Exactly. And that's why we just asked CSC to provide us with the discussions.
Okay, I'm sorry, just, just real quick, I, I wanna read, this is something from a twenty-eight, um, year employee. It says, "I recommend that DOA conduct orientations and detailed instructions regarding the proposed twenty-fourteen pay scale with a detailed compensation plan and its impact on current classification and step increments before approval or passing into law. As a public servant for almost twenty-eight plus years, I do not disagree with pay raises. Definitely well deserved in many cases, but rather how the proposed twenty-fourteen pay scale will be implemented and its fairness." And then, you know, I, I won't read, you know, the position, but, and so, you know, just real fair question and serious question in light of all this, right? That's been, been coming up here, um, and in light of all the questions being asked and information, do you think maybe? Because I think we're all on the same page, employees deserve the raise, right? But do you think maybe it's fair to say that we, we, we kinda put the brakes on this and give you time and give time, you know, to, to get all this information about, um, you know, what's it gonna cost, how, you know, how were things done? So that employees also know, like this employee knows how, you know, how the steps were, were taken, right? Is, is that, is that, is that something fair to, to, to say? If we can kinda put the brakes on this and, because I know right now, the only thing now that's why we're, it's happening this way is we're, we're up against time. We're up against the clock. Uh, there was a January fifteenth, um, timeframe when it was supposed to be submitted, it was submitted. And then there's a timeframe for when this thing must be implemented, right? But there's nothing that stops us if we work together and, and, and really work, you know, seriously together and cooperate and say, okay, in light of all these from, not just from us, but even from the private sector, we can amend that, um, you know, we can amend that time, that January, um, twenty-fourteen timeframe. So, I don't know, I mean, I, I wanna throw that out because I don't know where we're going, I think we're going in circles here, so.
Well, it, it was this body that put that timeline of thirty days, uh-
No, I, I understand, understand, understand.
Yeah, and, um, well, I mean, you can speak to the, the employees if, if, uh, you know, they've waited for so long and, and, and we have-
Absolutely, no, completely understand, and what I read was from the employee, yeah.
We have the appeals process, yeah. So, we have the appeals process and, and I think we should, you know, proceed with implementing this plan and the, the appeal process will, will commence.
So, it's not fair to, to say, let's put the brakes and answer all the questions?
I don't think, I don't think it's, it's fair to these employees to put the brakes when, when a lot of the other employees have gotten their raises, you know, the law enforcement, the, the, the nurses, the teachers have gotten raises in the past and, and with all due respect, Senators, the Senators also got their raise.
When I came in-
So, it's, it's time for the, the classified and unclassified also, the rest of the, uh,
Sure, and I, and I, and I-
The Gov- Gov-GOM, um, population to get their raises. The autonomous always gets their raises, but the, these, uh, we are the poor, the poor child here, the Gov-GOM line agencies who always get the, always get the criticism and always don't get the pay.
Yeah, and I think there's no argument, there's no argument in, in employees needing to get the pay raise. There's no argument, I think, there's no, you've never heard anyone say they don't deserve it, right?
Yeah, and, and that's-
But all I'm saying, just as a, as a, really, just if we just take a step back in light of all the, the questions, right? And, um, to, to do it where, you know, and even, I think it'll even help the administration, because right now, and, and I, you know, Shane, I, you know, I, I feel bad because I, I know that, you know, all this is, is, it's taking a toll, right? And, believe me, I, I know the work you do and all the work that your, that your employees do, and I appreciate it. But I'm saying, in light of this, you know, to, to get these, these, these questions answered and for us to have a time certain, time certain, you know, um, date, um, that we're gonna implement this, but let's have all the answers. Let's, let's do it.
It's, it's, Senator, with all due respect, it's gonna be, it's gonna be very difficult, you're gonna open up and so, every single step is gonna be, be questioned and then there's gonna be, you know, every, every single position has to be justified. It, it's, it's, we're never gonna implement this plan if that's the route we're gonna take.
Okay, all right, that's, that's, uh-
I mean, there's only, maybe there's, there's only a few of those positions and, um, let's not, let's not, um, uh, what, what I'm trying to say the word, I mean, um, let's not jeopardize the, the other employees that, you know, the, the positions are not in question.
Okay, okay, so, just, just finally, and so, the, when GMH was here, they, 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 they supported, they agree. However, you know, we don't know how much it's gonna impact them, we don't know where they're gonna get their money. They can't get it from their, you know, from their operating, we all know that, right? So, just if, if we can get information as to, um, whether this, uh, seven billion two is going to also be part, um, and GMH would also be a part of that.
Yeah, wha- whatever's, you know, the allocation, if, if you're going to do, um, an amendment with Senator San Nicolás's bill, you can direct us to find the money for, to make, you know, uh, the, the other, uh, employees whole.
That's right, okay, so I guess what I'm asking is just the amount?
Yeah.
The amount for, for what's it gonna cost, because we asked them, they don't know the impact. So, if, if there's anyone else that knows the impact, then if we're gonna put it on, we need to know what that, what that is. Okay, thank you.
I was gonna have a recess, but it's obvious that- If I could just ask- They weren't going to get the information to me, so I'll, I'll follow them up and, um-
If I could just ask a question?
I'll take my, my, uh, IT person, and if I can get into the system, we can figure out how to do the Excel sheet so that I can, I feel comfortable about what's happening.
Do, do any of the, um, directors and deputy directors have any information at this time on exactly where and how some of their staff are gonna be slotted and how much they're gonna get? Informally or formally, do any of these directors, deputies, staffers know exactly where some of these positions are gonna be slotted and how? No?
Uh, know what some of the, um, admin people have been doing is using twenty-ten as a guide to see where they're gonna go. But as far as specific slotting to the twenty-fourteen, no. Not for their specific staff, uh, and their department, we didn't release that information, Senator, 'cause we didn't have any authorization to.
The, the setting of the, the midpoint and the minimum and the maximum, the same methodology was used by the HAYs as the twenty-ten?
Yes.
And are they at the same mid-max and?
Know what I explained on Friday was the maximum was greater, uh, than in twenty-ten, and that was done to address the retention issues that were brought up by those employees who are further in the scale.
How about the midpoint as it relates to the market average?
Uh, the midpoint as an indicator to market is the same.
Same?
Yeah.
Which, which is it, ten, fifteen? I mean, there was like three?
Right, in twenty-ten, the midpoint was, uh, benchmarked against step, step seven. And so, step seven would be market indicator, uh, looking at all different sources, Senator.
Okay, and same, same in this?
Same in this, yes.
Same in this, yeah. But in the handout you had, you said that was like decisions or recommendations pending decisions or decisions pending release?
Mm-hmm.
Is it, so what does that mean?
Um, those were considerations, uh, based off feedback we got, complaints we got, twenty-ten. So, those are how we addressed those. Um, you know, we look at the pay scale, uh, twenty-ten, it was frozen, uh, at maximum. That's what was put in place, uh, uh, clearly that brought a lot of, um, animosity and, and bad things, so we changed that. Um, and we changed that by building steps into it again.
Right.
And putting a max there.
Okay. So, that's part of the, what is being requested to be approved?
Um, that's what we submitted, uh, that's what those, uh, pay scales in the plan, that's what they, that's what they're showing.
Um, it's a chair's position that we're not going to adjourn this. We'll recess it until, uh, Monday at ten. And if I change the time, I'll, I'll notify everybody, but we'll recess until then. But before then, I'll allow Senator San Nicolás to give his closing on his bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, wow, what a day, huh? What a day. And, um, and, and what a time for our island and our people. You know, uh, my, my heart is just, it's just very heavy and it's during times like this that I really, um, I really appreciate all the work that my colleagues have done over the years. Uh, this is a really difficult thing to do, you know, it's a very difficult thing to be, uh, to be a Senator, it's amazing. Um, we're talking about, about people's lives, you know, it, and it's amazing. Um, the bill, uh, and it seeks to make sure that we pay our classified and unclassified employees the raise that's being, uh, proposed. It seeks to, um, try and put a quality of life expectation at the management level that I think will be a really good thing for our people. It, um, provides for a, a pay increase that's, I think, reasonable for our mayors. And, um, it makes sure that we're not getting any increases for our Senators in Bill two sixty-eight. I really wish that, um, after our information briefing last week, we would have had more information so that we could just more, better understand exactly how this thing works out financially. But we're being, we're being pigeonholed into the same situation where we're being told to just trust the administration, that this is what's going to happen. And in the same breath, we're being given the instruction that if we do move forward with Bill two sixty-eight and make any kind of adjustments to what the governor proposed, then it's his way or the highway, and we can pretty much forget when we're gonna be able to implement any increases at all. And I'm just amazed at how we've turned the livelihoods of our people into a political football. You know, something that we're going to be punting and, and returning, we're gonna be watching the Super Bowl on Monday, and I'm just gonna be thinking all about this, you know? And, um, we need to make sure that, that when we, when we sit down and we do the people's work, that we're not, um, trying to justify this because of what happened before or make a reason to do things this way because we didn't do it that way before. We have to always get better. That's our calling as a people, and it's just human nature for us to always try and get better. And as we move forward to try and get better and meet this obligation to our classified and unclassified employees and improve the quality of life of our people and, and, and make our mayors, um, receive a little bit more compensation, as we move forward on that and try to get better, we need to dr- stop the, the, um, this whole, this whole, this whole show. This whole show of, of, uh, of Valentine's Day promises and the unknown of how much this is really going to cost, but just trust us because we did all this before. You know, all of the things that we've done over the, over the years, tax refunds, those are all good things for our people. And we must continually build on the good things that we do, but they must not be excuses for us to start going backwards or to start saying, that's okay, we're not going to be accountable for this or for that. And I think in all of us, we can agree that that is something that we need to embrace. And we need to embrace supporting our employees, and we need to embrace supporting our private sector, and we need to embrace reducing unemployment as a community. We need to embrace reducing crime as a community. We need to embrace controlling healthcare costs as a community. We need to embrace fully funding education, health, and public safety. And we need to embrace proper financial management in our government. And I hope, and I pray, that the governor can, as suggested by Senator Rodriguez, provide additional leadership on this and say, you know what? Based on what the Senators raised, maybe we, maybe we need, we do need to step back and, and look a little bit more closely at this. But if we're going to continue down this course, I really hope that we can work together as, as a group to have Bill two sixty-eight come out in a fashion that's not only going to make our classified and unclassified employees whole, but it's going to do a, a better job of compensating our mayors a little bit more. And it's going to provide a mechanism by which we can start looking forward to a better quality of life for our people. That's what I really hope we can do. And I, I, I'm very grateful to the Department of Administration for being honest in this journey. You know, uh, um, I got, I got a whole bunch of tenacious colleagues up here, and they, they love our people, and, and I know you guys do too. And, um, in the end, the passions flare and, and the emotions rise up, and we, we, we go into all these back and forths. But in the end, I think we all want the same thing. And, uh, I think that we can work towards that, and I look forward to working with my colleagues on that as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership on this matter.
Thank you, the committee will stand a recess until two o'clock on Monday. Uh, and we will- Um, the, um, the committee will have, will consider Bill two sixty-eight as having been heard.